Morning session. It is now 5:30 PM. We're going to take up item number 29, Alpha. This is the Anderson Ranch Proposal. Few things, just some housekeeping things. We're going to take the staff, staff presentation and any questions the board has of that. That'll take a little bit of time. Then after that's completed, we'll have public comment. We are not going to use the three-minute rule tonight. So in return, what I'd ask is that you, if you speak, you stay on point as best you can. And I understand that sometimes that's difficult to do. I've been a public speaker for a long time and sometimes it doesn't work out that way. Be courteous to other speakers and respectful of their time. If while speaking, you need time to collect your thoughts, let me know and we'll take care of you. You can be reasonably assured that each of us has read every email and written correspondence on this issue. I personally have received at least two emails in the last hour and I think we've all read them. It's okay to refer to your correspondence and remarks if you need to, but it will remind you that it is already part of the record. But if you want to highlight it, that's fine. I just ask it, you know, you try to avoid just reading a long, a long letter, but you're not going to hear to stop you from doing what you think you have to do. Finally, it's okay to say "me too" if somebody else has raised the issue. Don't, don't, don't worry about saying "me too" because we get it. So with those in mind, we'll start with the staff.
Okay? Thank you, Mayor Hope Sullivan, Planning Manager. The applicant is seeking to subdivide 48.2 acres, zone single-family 6,000, single-family 12,000 to 203 lots. This is the location in general where Vintage was, for those of you who recall the Vintage project, although it does not go west of Ormsby. The application has indicated a minimum lot size of 5,000 square feet, but there are lots that are less than 5,000 square feet. The Planning Commission has included a condition of approval that there be a minimum lot size of 5,000 square feet. That's condition number 23. Before going in-depth on this application, I'd like to discuss timing in Title 17. Timing. In reading the correspondence, I was surprised to read that there's a feeling out there, I guess, that the conceptual map was reviewed in February. It was not. The conceptual map was submitted on May 31st and that conceptual map meeting was held on June 18th. So I don't know where this February date is coming from, but the staff did not have a conceptual map to review until May 31st. In terms of noticing, the staff noticed this project for the Planning Commission Public Hearing by first-class mail to 424 property owners within 900 feet of the subject property. It was posted on four physical bulletin boards in the city as well as the city and state websites and appeared in the newspaper. Those were the legal requirements. In addition, on November 15, 2019, with the concurrence of the applicant, the staff posted the entire application on the city's website. We then formally notified Ann Knowles of the Nevada Appeal, Kelsey Penrose of Carson Now, and Maxine Neets, a resident who was very interested in the Vintage project, that the application was in and that all the materials were available online. The Nevada Appeal ran it on the front page on November 18th. The formal noticing was not required until December 6th. So I believe the staff went as, very aggressively and gained the word out on this and I want that on the record because I think there's been comments to the contrary. We took steps to proactively provide all interested members of this community with complete information as soon as we deemed the application complete. We were aware of the community meetings. We did not participate in those meetings. The staff has been available to speak to anyone who wants information or to hear their input and we have. This item did go to the Planning Commission for a public hearing. Now it's meeting on December 17th, as was required per our own code and NRS to achieve due process. We had to meet procedural due process. They meet every month. The application was in. There are certain timeframes for processing an application. We talked about timeframes a little bit this morning on a different project. So to meet all our due process requirements, we were required to bring that forward in December. So I think there's been questions about why that occurred and that occurred consistent with city and state law to meet all due process requirements. Title 17. Title 17 is our subdivision ordinance. It's formally called the Division of Land, comma, Subdivision of Land. There's three ways you can subdivide land in Title 17. You have 1705, which is a tentative map. 1709 is the planned unit development. And 1710 is common open space. Think of these as items on menu. One doesn't trump the other. You get to pick. They're different. I'll go through some of the deal points and I have a slide up to kind of walk you through what's different and what's not so different. The process is different. All three of these go to the Planning Commission for tentative plan, or tentative map review and then to the Board of Supervisors for tentative map approval. The tentative map, so 170, was '03? '05, sorry, 1705, and the common open space also come to the board for the final map. The planned unit development is not. The Community Development Director has the authority to approve a planned unit development final map. The tentative map in the common open space can be approved by motion. A planned unit development's an ordinance and it ends up on our zoning map. It's a different tool, but it's in our subdivision regulations. In terms of density, a tentative map has a minimum lot size equal to the minimum lot size dictated by the zoning district. So in a single-family 6,000, minimum lot size 6,000 square feet. SF 12,000, minimum lot size 12,000 square feet. In common open space and planned unit development, there's flexibility on the lot size. So for the common open space, the total number of units is the quotient of the gross area of the property divided by the minimum lot size required by zoning. For the PUD, the methodology is similar to the methodology of the common open space with a 10% density bonus. Using the tentative map will likely yield fewer lots than the other options because you're eating up some of the land with roads. There's been questions on that, so I wanted to speak specifically to that. Because the planned unit development has the density bonus, it will likely yield more lots. Terms of building setbacks, a tentative map is per the zoning district. Common open space in the planned unit development is flexible and those setbacks are established with the tentative map. On open space, there is no dictated requirement for open space on a tentative map. For the PUD, 30% of the total area needs to be open space. In a common open space development, 250 square feet per unit of open space is required. On the perimeter buffer, for a tentative map, there is no required tenet, on perimeter buffer. In a planned unit development, you have a 20-foot minimum setback requirement. That could be a backyard, though. You just can't build a building in there. In the common open space, a standard condition of approval, and this is Municipal Code 1710050, requires screening and buffering of adjoining development. Provision shall be made to assure adequate screening and buffering of existing and potential development adjoining the proposed common open space development. So there is a requirement for perimeter buffering, but there's not prescribed distance. It's a performance standard. For height, all three menu options, if you will, rely on the zoning to determine the height. Lee put together a illustration that shows the comparison and this is just illustrative. It's not necessarily associated with the project before you, but it just shows that, you know, in the first example, which is just your typical tentative map, 1705, there is no requirement for open space. You're just following the zoning. The common open space, you're having 250 square feet per unit of open space and the planned unit development is 30% minimum open space. So you would anticipate that the regular subdivision would yield the fewer slots and the planned unit development would yield the most lots. All three of these options comply with zoning. They are all allowed to be utilized. The Planning Commission and the Board of Supervisors have reviewed this type of development before. The common open space development was used at Schultz Ranch and at the Bates Homes Project on Little Lane. The applicant can speak to, for himself on why he chose the menu option he chose, but these are our menu options and we're going forward with a request to utilize the common open space development. With that, I'll now talk about the project. The subject property is comprised of three parcels. When considered as a whole, the property has frontage on Ormsby Boulevard, Mountain Street, and the following five dead end, dead end into the property. Lexington Ave., North Richmond, West Sunset, Bolero, and La Mirada Street. The applicant proposes to extend these dead-end roads into the development for vehicular and pedestrian access as well as providing access for Mountain and Ormsby. The applicant has proposed setbacks, including a rear setback of 20 feet. And again, we just talked about that. We got to be flexible on our setbacks, so they've identified what these setbacks will be. In the case of the rear setback, which is the one I'm most concerned with because the lots are all facing the interior streets, it will be 20 feet. I would just note then, the SF 12, the rear setback is 20 feet. So there's not, they're not going closer to the perimeter than if they use their base zoning. And the rear setback in the SF 6 is 10 feet, which means they're bringing the building farther away from that rear setback. And, but I do have to add that for the SF 6, if you have portions of buildings over 20 feet, then the setback is 20, which would be exactly as they're proposing. When using the common open space provisions, there is the requirement for adequate screening and buffering, as I mentioned. You'll notice in the sort of northeast portion of the property, there is not buffering provided. There's a condition of approval, it's Condition of Approval 18, that the Planning Commission is recommending landscape buffer along the rear of lots 1 through 6 and the side of lot 7 to meet that requirement for the common open space. Due to the number of houses, 1.7, I'm sorry, 1.17 acres of open space is required. The applicant is proposing 7.96. Of the required open space, 100 square feet per unit or .47 acres must be designed for recreation. The proposed trail system will meet the requirement for open space as it will accommodate active recreation. In addition to the open space requirements of 1710, the city charges a residential construction tax of $1,000 per dwelling unit. The applicant is proposing to construct improvements, including a trail system in lieu of paying the residential construction tax. As addressed in Condition of Approval 39, the neighborhood parks improvements will be subject to a public input process and approval by the Parks and Rec Commission. And then ultimately, the city and the developer would enter into a development agreement that would waive that residential construction tax in exchange for the construction and dedication of the improvements. That agreement would be subject to review and approval by this board. So you're not seeing a lot of detail on the improvements of the recreational areas with the exception of the trail, which the trail is, is part of the Unified Pathways Master Plan because that will be worked out through a public process, but will ultimately come back before this board in the form of a development agreement to waive the residential construction tax. That would be considered at the time of final map. When we consider a tentative map, we consider 12 findings. I want to discuss briefly five of those findings. Finding number four talks about the availability and accessibility of public services such as schools, police, transportation, recreation, and parks. As you've probably read in the staff report, the school district is concerned about the capacity and has advised the developments in the Fritch Elementary School Zone, which is currently nearly at capacity. Carson Middle School is currently over capacity. The school district plans to rezone for the 2021 school year, which will help at the middle school level. Any development on the west side will severely impact the school district. Having said that, the school district has not requested mitigation. Mr. Stokes was at the Planning Commission and spoke at the Planning Commission and I believe Mark Johnson is here tonight from the school district, but there is not mitigation proposed. Finding six talks about conforming with zoning in the land use element of the master plan. The master plan designation is medium-density residential. Per our master plan, this designation provides for medium-density residential neighborhoods that contain a mix of housing types in a neighborhood setting. The neighborhood should connect, contain connective green space that unify the development and provide transitions between other areas and uses. The density range per the master plan is three to eight units per acre. The applicant is proposing a medium-density residential development of 4.2 units per acre. The proposal utilizes the green spaces to provide transitions with other areas and where the transition is missing, lots 1 through 7, the Planning Commission has included a condition requiring the landscape buffers. The parking requirement, I did read about parking in some of the letters, is two spaces per unit and this will be enforced as each law is developed. Finding seven discusses conformity with the city's master plan for streets and highways. The functional classification pla, per the functional classification plan, Mountain Street and Ormsby are collector roadways. Staff believes both of these roadways have sufficient right-of-way, but due to the age of Ormsby, we're requesting a clear history of the width to verify the improvements will fit in that right-of-way. The transportation master plan also includes extending north Ormsby to Winnie Lane, which Lucia Maloney will speak to more specifically in terms of the payment for a prorata share. But we did look in terms of that finding at the requirements of the master plan and we find this project is meeting those requirements. Finding eight talks about the effect of the subdivision on the existing public streets. The subject property has access from southern public roads, Mountain, Ormsby, Lexington, Richmond, Sunset, Bolero, and La Mirada. The applicant will be extending the local dead-end roads onto the site as well as take access from Mountain and Ormsby, both collectors. Although there's a cul-de-sac bulb at the end of North Richmond, the recorded documents recognize the bulb as a temporary turnaround and the utility easement is not part of the public roadway. It is not part of the public roadway. The Planning Commission found that the dead-end roads were indeed intended to be extended and serve the subject property. So this was discussed by the Planning Commission and they did, they did find that it was right to create these connections. But again, Lucia will speak more specifically on the transportation. Finding eight talks about the physical characteristics of the land. The public correspondence raises concerns with the stormwater in the floodplain. The site includes an area, and I have this up on the screen, designated as FEMA Zone AO. You'll see it. It's in the southern portion of the property where the 60-foot buffer is proposed. That is within the 100-year floodplain. A letter of map revision will be required and all improvements and mitigations associated with the letter of map revision will need to be incorporated into the construction plans. In addressing the floodplain, the applicant's design may not increase flooding upstream or downstream. Correspondence encourages that this development not be approved until the Regional Floodplain Management Plan Study for the west side is completed. This did not come up at Planning Commission. This is, this was a new concern that's been raised. The staff does not find that there's a reason to delay this entitlement while that regional study is completed and Stephen Potte will be speaking more specifically to that matter. In terms of drainage, the applicant has incorporated detention basins in his design. Post-development runoff may not be greater than the pre-development runoff. And when the detailed drainage improvement plan is submitted, the applicant must demonstrate that will not adversely impact the neighboring property owners. There's been questions about utilizing the detention basins as open space. This is not unusual. We frequently see that as the case when we consider open space, be it a common open space development, a PUD, multifamily. Often, I think every single time, the open space identifies you need X amount of open space, Y amount of that needs to be active and Z gets to be passive. So every piece of open space doesn't need to be designed for active recreational. The code builds in for passive recreation. Finding 12 discusses recreation trail easements. As I mentioned, the Unified Pathway Master Plan includes a multi-use path along the southern property of the, southern property line of the property. The applicant has included that in their design. This will include a 10-foot wide multi-use path with adjacent 3-foot wide DG path connecting from the trailhead on Mountain Street all the way to Ormsby, consistent with the master plan. Condition of Approval 43 includes a multi-use path on the west side of the property and a 5-foot path in the open space along the northern property line, thus allowing for an onsite looped trail system. I've already talked to you about the residential construction tax and that they'll be doing improvements and seeking an agreement with the city. The Planning Commission spent a considerable amount of time about, talking about bathroom facility at the trailhead. You have in your packet a memo from the Parks and Rec Director advising that she does not oppose the removal of a bathroom amenity at the trailhead. The recreational improvements will be maintained by the HOA or a similar entity. The Planning Commission conducted its public hearing on December 17th and they voted 4 to 2 with one absent to recommend approval of this project. During the Planning Commission meeting, the applicant volunteered some conditions of approval related to architecture. 21 citizens spoke at the Planning Commission Public Hearing. I'd just like to respond to some of the comments I found to be recurring comments in the correspondence regarding having archaeologists on-site. I spoke with Mike Drews, who's Chairman of the Historic Resource Commission and a local archaeologist who, who certainly knows the lay of the land around here. His comment was that this would be a low-probability site. Therefore, staff is not recommending archaeologists. Usually, when you see an archaeologist, it's along a waterway where maybe a village was set up at some time and that's not the case here. Having said that, because of FEMA's involvement in this review, ultimately, they could ask for a Section 106, but at the local level, I'm not recommending an on-site archaeologist. There's been comments about construction hours. The hours of construction included in the conditions of approval are directly from the Municipal Code. The code gives us standard conditions of approval when we consider a tentative map. Having said that, I will remind the board that in the case of Vintage, the board did limit the Saturday hours to 9:00 AM to 5:00 PM and did prohibited work on Sundays. Architecture. There's a lot of comments about the architecture. Architecture is not within the scope of this review. The applicant has volunteered on the record conditions of approval related to architecture and the Planning Commission is recommending inclusion of those conditions. Absent the applicant volunteering those conditions, as part of this review, we cannot dictate architectural features. Open space. All perimeter open space is 30 feet wide. The staff finds the open space as presented does comply with the code requirements. There's been a lot of questions about that and I feel certain that it is in compliance. The staff is proposing some minor changes to the conditions of approval. Thank you Supervisor Bunkowski for identifying where we, we maybe weren't as clear. So on conditions 30 and 37, the staff will be recommending additional language that a recorded covenant or deed restriction shall be placed on all properties within the proposed development to ensure maintenance of these amenities is funded in perpetuity. In number 37, we would like to add the words "in perpetuity" after HOA. And on 35, we'd like to spell out Parks, Recreation, and Open Space where it's identified as PROS. I'd like to now turn it over to Stephen Potte to discuss the regional stormwater plan for the west side and then Lucia Maloney to speak to transportation. When they finish their comments, staff's available for questions. The applicant, Mike Raely, is present and he does have a presentation for the board. Thank you.
Thank you, Hope. Stephen Potte, Development Manager, for the record. So the slide that Hope just brought up is the regional flood plan that was discussed earlier. So as Hope mentioned, Condition of Approval 24A speaks to this project's need to go through the FEMA approval process and get that LOMAR approval. Currently, there's also a regional flood plan that actually just got, got kicked off. It's just in its beginning stages. It's called the West Carson Area Drainage Plan. This plan is funded by FEMA through the Carson Water Subconservancy District and is part of the city's regional flood plan, management plan. Some citizens have expressed concern that the tentative map approval should be postponed until the West Carson Area Drainage Plan is complete. Staff does not share this opinion for the following reasons. The current flood zone mapping for this area was done with older technology. As part of the project's analysis, this current project that we're reviewing, modern modeling software will be utilized to model the existing conditions of the site and the upstream and downstream areas. The West Carson Area Drainage Plan is a regional plan that looks at a very large area, as you can see from that map, and considers potential projects to decrease flood impacts regionally. So it's not as focused as this analysis will be, but it's more of a regional analysis. Also, the flood modeling that will be used for the project's FEMA approval is the same modeling that will be used in the west same modeling that will be used in the West Carson Area Drainage Plan analysis. So the project's modeling efforts may actually serve to increase the accuracy of the West Carson Area Drainage Plan in this part of the region. So with that, I'll turn it over to Lucia for the transportation bit.
Thanks, Stephen. Uh, Lucia Maloney, Transportation Manager. Uh, thanks for the opportunity to speak with you tonight specifically on some of the comments and questions that I've received on transit, transportation impacts of the project. Public Works staff, including our new transit, uh, traffic engineer, have thoroughly reviewed the project's traffic impact study. Although it wasn't perfect, overall, it was, for the most part, adequate. After initial review of the traffic impact study, staff requested supplemental information from the project's traffic engineer to validate the adequacy of the report. Specifically, the project map included through connectivity to Richmond, which was not analyzed in their original submittal. Additionally, it was determined that the originally collected traffic counts were conducted on a day that was a minimum day for Carson Middle School. The project submitted a supplemental analysis containing the required information, which satisfied staff's questions related to these points, and confirmed the adequacy of the analysis. I want to speak to the prorata contribution piece, I have received questions on that. The Regional Transportation Commission approved a template development agreement for prorata contribution for transportation capital projects. The only nearby transportation capital project in the future is the future connection from the Ormsby bend up to Winnie. The city owns the right-of-way for the project. The project is in the regional transportation plan, uh, yet it is currently unfunded. The estimated project cost for that project is 1.15 million. The developer conducts, conducted a contribution assessment using the methodology developed by staff and approved by the Regional Transportation Commission. The resulting prorata share contribution of this project to the future Ormsby connector is, was determined to be 3.5% of the total project cost totaling $40,250. The project applicant has a-
Say the number again. Say the- Sorry, say the number again, please.
Uh, 3.5% of the project cost, which equates to $40,250. The project applicant has agreed to enter into an agreement with the city for this share. Now I'll speak to questions on connectivity and the public versus private roads discussion. Staff has received a number of questions and concerns related to connectivity to adjacent neighborhoods. The project proposes to have public streets, which is different from the former vintage project, which, as you recall, had gates and limited access. With the proposal of public streets, staff supports the best practice of full connectivity to the adjacent neighborhoods, which disperses the traffic as much as possible to those adjacent streets. Further, the location of this development within Carson City's downtown is such that traffic from both within, as well as outside the project, will contribute and utilize these roads. The roads will function as part of the city's grid pattern, road system. As such, staff has agreed with the project's proposal to accept these new roads as public roads. Now I'll speak to questions related to specific neighborhood streets that we've received. Uh, Richmond to the south of the project. Staff has been asked about the offset intersection at Richmond and Washington. Doesn't this intersection warrant a four-way stop? No. Staff independently analyzed and verified that a four-way stop at Richmond and Washington is not currently warranted at this location, and nor will it be after the project. If or when circumstances evolve where traffic increases, or there are crashes, or something changes, staff will monitor and will manage that situation appropriately. Now I'll speak to Sunset Way to the south. Staff has been asked about the width of Sunset Way, and whether it's an issue for traffic flow or safety concerns. Although Sunset Way is narrower than Lexington or Richmond, and it's also narrower than the city's standard street section for local roads, the distance from face of curb to face of curb is 40 feet. So that's enough room for two 12-foot wide travel lanes and parking on either side of the street. These widths are con- are consistent with ASHTO guidance. Consequently, staff do not think this is an issue for traffic flow or safety. With regard to Sunset Way, staff has also been asked about the offset intersection of Sunset and Washington, as well as site distance in that location. Site distance to the east may be limited today due to landscaping and the location of the travel lanes. We are aware of that. However, the current Public Works project along Washington, uh, has taken steps to alter the lane striping such to mitigate those site distance concerns. Further, while the intersection of Sunset is not aligned, realignment of that intersection would likely require a right-of-way acquisition, and the offset is such that staff do not feel the cost would be justified due to the expectations that through traffic will be minimal, if any, uh, and review of the crash data further confirmed that realignment is not warranted due to safety concerns. Finally, I was asked about the stop sign at Mountain and Fleishman. I was asked whether the project should be asked to pay for the stop sign that was installed years ago at Fleishman and Mountain. No. The stop signs at this location were warranted years ago with no relation to this Anderson Ranch project or any previous iteration of the project. Uh, so with that, I'll conclude my comments, but I'm happy to answer any additional traffic questions you might have.
Do we have questions of, of the panel here, or at least Lucia? Anybody? Go.
Uh, Lucia, relative to the stop sign, um, at Mountain and Fleishman versus Richmond and Washington, um, is it, can you explain what sorts of things? I'm not, I'm not asking to explain the ASHTO manual because we would fall asleep, but, um, maybe you can just quickly recap why, that, what the difference is between those two intersections? Why you believe Richmond and Washington shouldn't have one, and, and Mountain and Fleishman should?
Sure. Uh, the, the conditions which are evaluated to determine a warrant for a stop sign, there are a couple of options. So you might need a stop sign if the minor approach, so the, the side of the street that's, has less traffic, if it's, if there's queuing, right? There's too much through traffic on the main street, and so the, the minor street backs up because they can't get out. So then you would add a three-way stop. That was the case at, uh, Mountain and Fleishman. There's also instances where if there's crashes or site distance where you would need everyone to stop such that the minor approach could get out, um, safely. Uh, and so those are different conditions that we look at. As volumes increase, um, on Washington in the future, that may be a condition where, um, Richmond starts queuing, and then we would need to consider a, a stop there.
So, so to be fair, I mean, that's something that you will monitor.
Yes, absolutely.
Um, relative to the public versus private road issue, um, and it, so vintage was private roads, this is public roads. What, what are the maintenance costs of these roads, say, over a five-year period once it's built out? What would we anticipate the city having to pay over that period of time?
That's a great question. And anticipation of potentially receiving that question, we, staff sat together, we, uh, and I discussed this with both the Public Works Engineering Group, as well as the street maintenance, uh, and we looked at different things. Uh, when asphalt is new, it's easier to maintain, right? And so you may get little cracks, a little, little quarter-inch cracks, and you may want to do slurry seals. So you, there, the recommended treatment is crack sealing every two years for the first 10 years, and slurry sealing every five to 10 years. There's also the ongoing maintenance of sweeping, potentially snow removal, uh, storm drain maintenance, uh, repainting the pavement markings every year, uh, replacing the signs for retroreflectivity every five years. For that first five years, for approximately 1.6 miles of residential road as proposed for this project, staff estimated a cost for maintenance of $250,000.
Okay, so you could say- Sorry, so you could say roughly $500,000 for 10 years?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
And after that 10-year period, the cost would-
Yeah, change is right. Okay, thank you.
Some of the comments were to put, to close off, uh, the side roads from Washington and the other, the, the north side, uh, by bollards where there's currently, uh, barbed wire fence or fencing of some sort. What's your analysis of that?
You know, we did, we did look at that, and we also asked the project's traffic engineer to look at that as well. Realistically, most cars are going to go to the co- the collector streets of Ormsby and Mountain. Most of them are going to go to Mountain. It's easier to travel on Mountain, easier and faster to get to where you want to go. That said, you know, the more options folks have, uh, for normal travel, if they want to go north-south, they may take those north-south connections. For every connection you take away, that's then forcing all of the traffic to those other streets. And for that reason, uh, you know, staff recommend more connectivity.
How come those streets, if you know, Lucia, weren't just blocked off permanently? I mean, they're, they have a temporary fence across. What was that done for, if you know? I mean, it was probably done a long time before you were here.
My understanding is the fence was done just for that, that the Anderson Ranch parcel. Um, but there, you know, like Sunset at the bottom, there's no cul-de-sac there, and it's an issue today. We get calls from the residents that we can't, uh, do normal typical city services, the waste management trucks, we're, he, he necessarily has to drive on private property to turn around. Likewise, with, uh, the mail and, and other services. And so I think, my read is it was always intended to connect, and so that, that's what staff have recommended here.
There's a, for Ormsby Boulevard, there's an actual kind of a dotted line on our, some of our maps that shows a connector between, uh, Winnie and, and Ormsby. Uh, that doesn't show on the other, on the Anderson Ranch ones. Is there a reason for that?
I can't speak to before the city owned the right-of-way, but I, it's, the connection from Ormsby to Winnie is shown on our maps now because we own it as right-of-way. And so that may be why it's on the maps now.
Okay, thank you. Other questions? John?
Uh, yeah, we're moving on from transportation. I had a question for Hope.
Go.
Hope, you talked about the, um, situation with the residential tax, um, and, uh, the trail, and that is a deal that would have to be worked out with the city later, you said, as I understand it. First of all, my understanding was that, that $1,000 per residence was to go to our fire situation or other types of things that are needed. Um, so why are we considering that?
I think what you're recalling is as part of the LAMPAS-specific plan, there was a requirement for $1,000 per unit, and it's not earmarked. There was discussion maybe fire, but it was going to go where the city deemed it was based on the impact. That for sure was part of the LAMPAS development agreement. The residential construction tax is actually in the LAMPAS development agreement as well. But the residential construction tax, should there not be an agreement, the result is they pay $1,000 per unit. But I, what we're saying is that we know that they will be seeking an agreement with the city to build the improvements in lieu of the payment.
I guess what I'm really driving at is, if that's open space and they're dedicating, that's part of the requirement for the, uh, developer anyway, isn't it?
That's why I tried to create the distinction between what was the regulatory requirement versus what's the, in the residential construction tax. So the regulatory requirement is slightly more than one acre. They provided seven acres. Um, they are required to have the trail on the south side, they've included a trail on the west side and on the north side. So there are things that they volunteered in condition, I think it's condition 39, there's a recommendation for, I think it's a, a pavilion or a gazebo, and, um, some other improvements, but in, those improvements haven't been fleshed out specifically yet because there will be a public process where Parks and Rec will work with the community and the Parks and Rec Commission to identify the specific improvements that will be desirable there.
I understand that, but the developer has volunteered to do that. It sounds like he's trying to negotiate right out of the box. So I just wanted to raise that question.
Any other questions? Uh, to talk, uh, as long as we're talking to you, Hope, uh, I don't know that you addressed the issue of is there water available?
Stephen Potte, Development Engineering. There's, uh, city water mains, uh, going into all sides of the project, and there's sufficient, uh, water to supply their needs.
Sufficient water in our water master plan?
Correct. So there's, uh, sufficient water in the, the short term, and then also the, the water master plan accounts for the development.
Brad, sorry.
Hope, back on the, um, residential construction tax, so if there's 203 lots, then at build-out, the developer contribution would be $203,000, correct, at $1,000 per unit. Uh, do we look at, uh, if we're going to enter into an agreement with the developer to waive the residential construction tax, uh, in exchange for other improvements, do we look at the cost of the improvements to be built to make sure that it's an apple-to-apple exchange?
Thank you Supervisor Bunkowski. Jennifer Budge, Parks and Recreation Director. Typically with a development, the, um, developer will do improvements that exceed the residential construction tax amount. They're able to build things a lot cheaper and easier because they're already mobilized on the ground than if we were to build them ourselves. So for example, for $203,000, you couldn't even afford to put in a group use picnic pavilion or a playground, but they'll be able to do that at the trailhead. So the recreation improvements, they have to turn over their receipts at the end to make sure that they either meet or exceed the expenses, um, for the residential construction tax. So it would likely exceed the $203,000.
Go.
Before you leave, uh, I had a question about the RTC funds as well. So are we contemplating spending the RTC funds on the, on the trail, correct? On the, on the, on the trail, on the paved trail? Yes?
So it's residential construction tax, so RCT. I don't want to get RTC and RCT mixed. So it's, it's restricted in Nevada Revide Statutes 278, and it's for neighborhood park improvements, and it's very specific as to what can be provided. So we can provide a neighborhood connection, we can't provide a regional connection for a trailhead, we can do playgrounds, we can do ballfields, we can do small turf areas, but it's very specific on what components are eligible for that credit.
Okay, well, that, I'm not sure that answered my question.
But yes, yes, the trail would count because it provides neighborhood connectivity.
And so the trail would count, and then you're talking about doing improvements at the, the existing park, at the parking lot.
Yeah, so we, we talk in the conditions about neighborhood park improvements at the existing Mountain Street trailhead.
Okay. And then is the, are the detention ponds going to be grassed, or are they going to be, I mean, is that something that you're looking at at all? Will it, will there be? I'm assuming there aren't going to be playgrounds, per se.
There will most likely not be playgrounds, but we will determine that through a public process, as Hope mentioned before, to find out what amenities people would like to see based within the site constraints that we have. It's not a huge area, so there's not too many opportunities. Um, if the applicant, um, wants to consider grass, we're definitely open to that. It could be a secondary recreation area. Um, I do have concerns because there's no affluent on-site and reclaimed water, so you'd be using your potable water to gra- to water that turf, and is that where we want our, our drinking water to go? So it's just-
The HOA would be.
Well, yes, but it, yes. So it, they would maintain it.
I get it, I get it, it's still water, but, but all of our parks are on fresh water.
They are, and I wish they weren't, but yes.
So, um, okay, so, so there, so, I mean, theory, there will be grass, and if there is grass, and I guess maybe this is a question for Hope, that the HOA will be required to maintain it so that it- I had the same question on the Little Lane project because they were doubling, the detention pond was also the recreation area. And the concern I had is that in some of those detention ponds, they get, um, full of debris and they're, they're, they're not play areas anymore. So I, I want to make sure that you feel, um, both of you, that it, it's sufficiently written that, you know, if there's full of rocks and dirt, that, that it can be fixed.
And I believe there's a condition about, um, a maintenance agreement between the city and the HOA to determine what the maintenance standards would be. So that's where we would address that.
Thank you.
I'll just add to that. Um, with the common open space, there are standard conditions that need to be included anytime we consider a common open space development. Those are conditions, I believe, um, they are 16 through 19. Those conditions are very specific about the HOA being responsible for the maintenance and preservation of those open space areas. So our own code already contemplated that. Additionally, I know that in the applicant's presentation, he plans to show, um, schematics and photographs of what he envisions the landscaping along the trail area and the detention basins to look like.
While we're talking about vegetation management, we all know that that field has caused problems for neighbors over the past four or five years. So do you feel like what you have here, if they take ownership of it, is sufficient so that we don't have that problem anymore? So that we can hold their, the new owner's feet to the fire if they do take ownership and it goes through escrow? Because I, I don't think those neighbors should have to go through what they're going through anymore.
Understood. And I've actually had that conversation with the applicant. Um, per the code, they, the applicant will be responsible for maintaining- Per the code, the applicant will be responsible for maintaining all the open space areas you see on the graphic. I think there's been questions about what happens in the interim between the time of ownership and as development's occurring. And clearly, they have to, just like every property owner, maintain their property. So the conditions of approval speak more specifically to, once it's established. But this was a discussion before the planning commission that the staff had on whether or not it made sense to somehow incorporate a requirement to maintain your property into conditions of approval. And at the end of that conversation was, well, no, we shouldn't tie that you have to maintain your property to this project, you just have to maintain your property.
Well, let me interrupt you for a second. I would, I would normally agree with you, except that, you know, I've visited some of the homes up there that had problems before, and, you know, six or eight feet of tumble mustard, and now it's down to three feet, but they're being told by the city that it doesn't constitute a hazard, and they have to take civil action. I don't, I personally think that's baloney, and I don't want, I don't want this scenario with the new owner to get to that point. I don't think that the people should have to take civil action when it's pretty clearly an issue. So I, I don't, having said that, I don't know how I would word a condition of approval that would, I mean, I get what you're saying, I just, you know, I want them to hear that. And I guess I want to...
It may be a good idea, maybe, when the applicant's up, to ask what their plans are for property maintenance upon acquisition.
Thank you, Supervisor Barrett.
Thank you. Jen, you seem to be saying, if I'm hearing you correctly, that they will spend more on the trail and open space than, and they'd have to reap the 203,000 or up, and they can get more done with less money, but meet that standard. Is that what I hear you saying?
That's correct. For example, with Schultz Ranch, they spent over $1 million on the park. There's only 400 and something homes.
There were some comments from the public in some of the letters, well-written letters that suggested, maybe we ought to forego open space and leave the lots larger. What's your take on that for any of you?
At the beginning, we talked about Title 17, the subdivision regulations. And I had, I talked to a couple people, and I'm equating it to a menu. You go to a restaurant, they hand you a menu. You have three choices, you can have the hamburger, the hot dog, or the grilled cheese. I can't tell them which one to pick. They have a right to pick whichever one, they're all on the menu. So what is before you is, it meets the code, the applicant is allowed to use it. And I don't see how at a staff level, I'm in a position to refuse this application when our own code clearly gives them the right to order this.
Did the applicant know that the perimeter trail is on the Unified Trail Master Plan?
Yes, we had a conceptual map meeting in June, and during that meeting, we, our Parks and Rec staff attends that meeting, explained that the Unified Pathways Master Plan would require a trail along the southern property line. And in fact, in conversations with the applicant, they have asked me, had they pursued the option of a tentative map, would the trail have been required? And the answer is yes, because when we look at our findings for the tentative map, not the common open space, not the PUD, although those as well, we have to look at Parks and Recreation and Trails. I can find the section, if you need it, in the staff report. That means we go to our Parks and Master Plan. We go to our Unified Pathways Plan, we say, what are the city's policies with respect to this? Now, would they have had to actually build it? That's another question I'm not prepared to answer. Would they have had to dedicate the land to accommodate a park so that didn't preclude the park that's on our master plan? Absolutely. And what the applicant has advised me is, given that they already had to give up land for a trail, it made sense to them to order the common open space development as opposed to go with the straight zoning approach.
Okay. Any other, any other questions on this panel until we, I'm sure there may be more, but we'll take the applicant? Maxine, we're going to wait for public comment until... We'll get to it, we'll get to them, Maxine, we'll get to them. We'll get to them.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the board, thank you for having us tonight. For the record, I'm Mike Raely with Christie Corporation. Also with me is Scott Christie, the project principal, as well as Lauren Chilson with Headway Transportation, the project traffic engineer. I think staff did a very good job, a very comprehensive job of going through the project and some of the issues that have come up during the process. I have a brief presentation that I would like to go through.
Hang on, hang on, we'll just hold tight. Okay.
Some of it may be repetitive, so I'll kind of go through that fast, but there's a couple other issues that were discussed that I would like to expand on as well. This is just a quick overview, I think Hope and Stephen covered basically all of this. I do want to emphasize that last bullet point, that this is not associated with the previous vintage project or that previous developer. I know that was included in some of your correspondence. This is an entirely different project with different, different developers. The site plan that you see there, as you can see, everything that's in green is essentially the open space. And there were some questions raised about, well, what is that green area going to look like? And I've got some examples of that coming up in our presentation. But I think it really kind of rolls into this next slide of why we chose the common open space. As Hope mentioned, putting in the regional trail really triggers a need right out of the gate for some dedicated open space area in order to accommodate that trail. What it does provide is for the community amenities and the park improvements. It also allows for the provision of the VNT trail link along Ormsby. And it creates a buffer between new and existing homes. And there were some letters in your packet saying that buffer should go away. However, we held a community meeting, and we were told, actually by some of those same people, that they wanted, they wanted those buffers in order to give them more privacy to the existing homes. It really also enhances the overall aesthetics. And with the HOA providing the ongoing maintenance, there's assurances that those, those continue to be attractive in perpetuity. The other thing I think is important to note is the really, it doesn't change the unit count. I mean, you can still, you can do bigger lots, but lose amenities. And I think really it provides for a better, better project at the end of the day. The smaller home sites that were referenced in the letter are internal to the project, so they're really not even visible from outside of the project itself. We created ring the site with open space and larger lots to screen all the smaller home sites internal to the site. It doesn't change the project impact. Larger lots still generate the same amount of traffic, the same impacts to the schools and whatnot. So it doesn't change the impact to pick another menu option, as Hope referred to. What it does create is significantly larger setbacks between the new and existing homes. And that, from what we're proposing with 30 feet on the north and 70 feet on the south, it's anywhere from two and a half to three and a half times separation that would occur should those lots be pushed right to the property line. So these are some examples of other projects that our firm has done in the Kylie Ranch area in Sparks, showing kind of what we anticipate those buffers to look like. So along the north and the south, along Ormsby, we want to limit the use of turf just to conserve water and go with more of a decorative zero scape, which is what you see there. So you have a mix of evergreen and deciduous trees, shrubs. Those were taken just yesterday before the storm hit, so you can kind of see, you know, what they look like year-round. And then go to the next slide, please? And then a question was, was asked, well, are the front yards going to be landscaped? And yes, they are. All new homes will come standard with front yard landscaping. The new homes will include turf, trees, shrub, and ground cover in the front yards. We do plan to offer potentially a zero scape option, which if that, if that is chosen in lieu of the turf, additional shrubs will be planted to add color and texture to those yards so you don't end up with just, you know, a bland DG front yard. The buffer areas, once again, will include a mix of evergreen and deciduous trees with shrubs and rock mulch. The detention basins, we do, since they are central to the site, and that question was asked by Supervisor Giomi, yes, we do plan to use turf in those detention basins to add some, some visual, you know, aesthetics to the site, some green area within the project itself, so those will be turfed. Of course, we will have trees and shrubs as well to complement that. The trailhead and the adjacent improvements are, will include, as we envision, as we all know that it's a public process, but a mix of turf, trees, shrubs, and mulch. Similar, that's a kind of a neighborhood pocket park that was done in Kylie Ranch here on the bottom right. Kind of similar to what we would anticipate, you know, around the trailhead. Next slide. We did hold a community meeting prior to the planning commission hearing, and I've kind of outlined the primary issues that came up. One was requesting a detached path along Ormsby, which we now have. The path around the entire perimeter, the buffering and screening of existing homes, once again, keeping those buffers on the north and the south side. The roadway connectivity, which I think you'll hear about tonight. Height limitations for perimeter lots. There was concern that if an existing single-story home backed up to the property, that they did not want a two-story home adjacent to their property. And we had agreed at the planning commission and volunteered a condition that if a, if a home backs to a single-story home, we will match it with a single-story home. If there's a lot line that kind of splits the existing lots, we'll err on the conservative side and go with a single-family home if we join a single-family home. Once again, the neighbors requested that we'd not have a trailhead at the restroom, and we requested that of the planning commission, and they removed that in order to be replaced with something of comparable expense and improvements. Additional intersection analysis, as Lucia referred to. Our traffic engineer went out and did some supplemental counts to validate the original traffic study. And then there was concerns related to architecture, that it, the project needs to blend with the existing neighborhoods, not have a sharp contrast such as Spanish or Mediterranean style, to be more traditional. And we volunteered a condition related to that, if we can go to the next slide. Once again, we did do the additional intersection analysis, provided the detached pathway and the path within the entire open space area, and then we worked with parks to remove the restroom and provide alternative improvements. These are the conditions that we volunteered, that there'd be no Spanish or Mediterranean architecture, traditional craftsman or farmhouse architectural styles will be implemented. And then each home must have two of the following, brick or masonry products, stained, painted or weathered wood siding, shingles, those materials, so that, it breaks it up. And that, that home that you see there in the picture is an example of implementing those standards, where you don't just have all stucco or all wood siding, there needs to be some variation of materials. So we've agreed to that and volunteered that as a condition, along with the single-story matching that I mentioned. That would all be enforced by CCNRs and the homeowners association. I will tell you that since this slide was put up, we heard actually today from two neighbors regarding the tumbleweed situation, we recognize that. We do not own the property currently, but when we do take ownership, we are agreeable to a condition that requires maintenance to ensure that that situation does not occur during construction, whether it be mowing down the weeds or, you know, and maintaining it to a higher standard even during the construction process. And then obviously, once the project is, is complete, those buffers are in, will be in. The homeowners association will be maintaining those, and I think the tumbleweed issue will be, if not eliminated altogether. So with that, that concludes my presentation. I believe Scott Christie has a few things he'd like to add, and then we're available for any questions you might have.
Thanks, Mike. For the record, Scott Christie with Christie Corporation. I did have quite a few things to go over, but I think staff and Mike have done a very thorough job, so I won't repeat a lot of that. But a couple things I did want to address, one of the comments is the why on the common open space development, and I think staff has addressed that pretty well, but I'd like to expand on that a little bit. As Hope put it, we had a menu of three options, you know, the straight tentative map option was one. We did look at that. As she mentioned, we have a, a regional pathway that goes through the site. So by definition, we looked at this as an open space, common open space development. That gave us two options, the PUD and the common open space development. And we looked real hard at that. We actually, we're on the PUD route for a long time. And based on the lot size that we think fit there, we didn't, we could do more lots with the PUD. But based on the lot size that we felt fit, we chose the common open space. As Hope also described, is we've provided a lot more open space than is required by code. I think roughly seven times the open space that's required by code. And we did that based on feedback we've got from the community wanting buffers, wanting more open space. So that's where that was born from. We, we are okay doing less open space, but the feedback we've been getting was more open space. So that's, that's why you see what you see on the plan today.
I hesitate to interrupt you, but at the beginning of the presentation, there was a question about whether there was landscaping or buffer on lots one through five, I believe, seven?
Sure, and I can...
Could you address that issue for me, please?
Yeah, I can address that. So those are the lots, if we can put the site plan up. There are the lots on the northeast corner of the site. Those six lots up there. Based on the geometry of the property that we have, providing a trail back there and pedestrian access, and this was based on some, you know, not only our opinion, but some feedback we got from the neighbors, didn't make a lot of sense to put a trail back there. But what we have agreed to, and I'll ask Hope to maybe read the condition or give us a little more detail, we've agreed to an easement that's landscape-only, so that buffer will still be there, but it will not have public access for the public in general to walk back there. Okay.
Thank you.
Yep. Couple other things I'll throw out, there's been a lot of talk, Mike went over the architectural conditions that we've agreed to. And I want to expand on one of them, we've had a lot of feedback on the two-story versus one-story. Per code, we're allowed to build two-story, you know, all the way around the property. We've heard from the neighbors that they don't want to see the two-story. So we've agreed to the one-story adjacent to, to one-story and two-story adjacent to two-story. We've looked at the plan, our intent is to build one-stories along there. We do want the, or did want the ability to do two-stories, but I'm prepared to modify that condition and commit that we'll build all one-stories around the perimeter.
Around the perimeter is one story?
Around the perimeter is one story. And then that would, that would be, that's on the north side. We have, we have a huge buffer on the south side, I'm sorry. That's on the north side, is what we've been talking about. Thank you. And the last thing I will address, which I think Mike addressed well, is the weed situation. We understand that there's an issue out there. We've met with a couple neighbors, I've seen some pictures. There certainly is a problem. And I can tell you, if we owned the property today, that problem would be fixed today. And as Mike indicated, we're happy to enter into a condition or some agreement that at the time we do take ownership of the property, we'll rectify that situation.
Right? Next up? Want to talk about traffic?
I'm here to answer questions. Lucia did a great job explaining the connectivity, and certainly we responded to community concerns as best we could following the meeting, and so if there's specific questions, I'm absolutely happy to take them.
One of the questions I asked earlier was, what happens if you don't allow the cross, the north-south roads to go through, and you make those bicycle and pedestrian only? What's your analysis of that?
Sure. Lauren Chilson with Headway Transportation, by the way. It's my opinion that all of those roads had been intended to serve that property from day one, and connectivity is important because it disperses that traffic amongst a variety of avenues. It doesn't overload one particular intersection, which is good for the city to have that dispersed traffic. It also provides equity amongst all the neighbors that we're talking about, right? I mean, why should one road connect but another not? It simply loads one street more than the others. And so from that perspective, it's a bit of an equity issue, I think. In all fairness, roads that were planned to connect should all connect. But the greatest reason is not to overload some intersection on Mountain Street by sending an undue amount of traffic that direction.
All right. Any questions? John?
Can, so can you tell me on the northern perimeter what the lot sizes are? Are those ones all at least 10,000 square feet? Because the smaller ones are on the inside? Can you tell me on the northern what they are? I can't tell from that, sorry.
You bet, Scott Christie with Christie Corporation. So the lots on the northern side, they are, the average, the smallest lot size there would be a 70 by 110, so 7,700 square feet. I don't, I don't have the, or at least I can't read on my, on my printout here, the larger side, but they go, they get quite a bit larger than that.
I think...
Oh, I see, 80s.
Yeah, for the record, Mike Raely, those lots on the north side, there's one lot that is actually all just under 15,000 square feet. And they range, as Scott mentioned, the minimum of 7,700 up to just right over, I think, 14,950 approximately. And then the, the ones in the northeast corner are obviously larger based on the depth, so I think they're closer to, I believe they're 10,000 square feet. But, but like I said, without having the actual lot and block plan.
Yeah, 7,700. Just wanted to make sure that... Oh, you have another one? Thank you.
This, this just has the finished grades, it doesn't have... It doesn't have.
I printed a copy here and shared it with her. So we, she has it. I, I printed out from the packet.
Great.
Thank you. And then I guess, sorry, if I can continue, I guess what I need to understand then, um, cause I, I just need this to be clear in my mind. There's going to be, how close from a house on the northern could a neighbor be? Is that a minimum of 40 feet, 50 feet? I'm trying to truly get an understanding so everyone in the public will understand. If I live across the street from it and my house is currently situated on my lot here, what's the closest building that can?
Right. So on the north side, that buffer that you see on the map is, and it fluctuates, but it's a minimum of 30 feet. So worst case scenario, you would have 30 feet from the existing property line to the, to the back property line of a new home, and then a 20-foot setback from that line to the home. So 50 feet minimum to the northern property line.
And in a standard development, without us being able to condition these buffers, what would that normally be?
20 feet.
Only 20. So is this, they're gaining a 30-foot minimum additional setback than anything they would get in a standard?
Correct. And actually, and it's, it could actually be more than that because SF6 zoning, which is located on the east side, is a 10-foot buff, is a minimum setback. But we've agreed to go with the 20-foot minimum.
And, and I really ask this because I'm trying to understand some of the public, and I've got mixed emails. You know, some give me a little bit more buffer, some keep the buffer, some get rid of the buffer and give me everything pursuant to Title 18. And so I'm just trying to picture the development and actually see the houses, even though we can't see them, I'm trying to. So I really believe the buffer gives the current residents more, uh, safety, more aesthetics by having the buffer than no buffer. Cause they get.
It essentially is two and a half times what.
What they would normally.
That's correct. One and a half times, yeah, one and a half time.
Okay, thank you.
Supervisor Barrett.
Thank you. I'd like to go back to traffic because, uh, Mike said something about, uh, your traffic man has done work in excess to validate the original traffic study. In some of the, um, correspondence we've had, I've noticed that it was done, the original appears to me was done during non-school, during the summer. Is that correct or? So what did you mean by that to validate?
Again, Lauren Chilson. Our initial traffic counts were conducted on June 4th, which was very close to the end of the school year, second to the last day. Um, and one of the schools went out, just was under a minimum session that day. However, uh, our counts are for the AM peak period, and school buses were absolutely observed and recorded during those counts. So we know we captured that. In the afternoon, you know, the question was raised, well, didn't you capture the afternoon school period? No, and it's not critical because the afternoon critical period is the five to six period, which we did count. Uh, when we came back and studied Richmond later, um, back in December, uh, December at the request of, uh, local citizens, we did confirm again that the school hours, um, were captured. And we found that the afternoon school hour was actually less than the five to six hour. So our study incorporates and utilizes the highest hours of the day. And I believe we have captured those conditions adequately.
Thank you.
Anything further? Board, anything?
Go. On, um, condition 24, it talks about, uh, 24B specifically. Uh, it talks about half-street improvements on North Ormsby along the project frontage, including striping, gutter paving, uh, bike lane striping. Uh, and I think it talks about also a five-foot sidewalk. Huh?
That's on C. Um, there is no sidewalk on Ormsby. Cause the trail will be on private property.
No, I, I got that. The five-foot sidewalk is on Mountain Street, right? Yeah, I just hadn't gotten to saying mountain yet. Um, but so am I reading that right? So we're going to say that they've got to do a half-street bike lane for the width of this along Ormsby? So, so if I, so if I'm, so after this is done, if I'm driving down Ormsby, we're going to have no bike lane, no bike lane, no bike lane. We're going to have bike lane and then we're going to have no bike lane again. Is that what we're asking them to do?
Steven Potat, development manager, yeah, that's correct. Um, so it's a, a standard condition of approval that comes up a lot. Um, we do end up getting a lot of piecemeal improvements around town, but it, it decreases the, the cost to the city to try to create all those on our own. As, as development comes in, it finishes the.
Okay. I, I find that really confusing because, I mean, I get it. I, I get that they're impacting what's a requirement, but, um, uh, it doesn't make sense to me to have a road that's a mile long and have 900 feet of bike lane on a road that's a mile long. It makes no sense to me.
If I, if I may add, uh, thank you supervisor. Uh, so within the code, we're allowed to ask for half-street improvements along the frontage. Staff do intend to add the rest of the pieces. Uh, this project and the roads within this are within Performance District Five within our pavement management plan, which will be completed in 2023. Staff are currently working on a grant application to, uh, resurface and, and fix up Ash Canyon Road uh, to the bend of Ormsby, which, and then the additional bike path and pedestrian improvements connected to the elbow and down will be completed during that time as well.
Okay. So this won't be created in isolation? That there is a, it will be a fully completed project, just not paid for by them?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you. Makes me feel much better.
Okay. Any other questions? All right. Uh, we're ready for, guys want to take a break for a minute? Then?
Yeah, sure.
All right, we're going to be in, uh, recess for about 10 minutes. Everybody go take care of their personal business if they have any. Uh, let me just, uh, for the record here, some of you weren't here when I read it, uh, at the beginning. Uh, we don't, we don't use the three-minute rule tonight. So, uh, what we ask in return is that you try and stay on point as best you can. Uh, be courteous to other speakers and respectful of their time. If while speaking, you need time to collect your thoughts, let me know. Please address your concerns to the board and not to cross-examine the staff. Let us determine whether questions go back to them. You can be reasonably assured that each and every one of us has read every email and written correspondence on this issue. Uh, it's okay to refer to your correspondence and your remarks if you need to, and it is part of the record already. It's okay to say me too. Okay, so with that said, we'll be in recess for 10 minutes.
Every new housing unit impacts Carson School District with addition overcrowding for our schools. Carson City School District, our capacity in all our schools from elementary to high school. Carson City should consider incorporating an impact fee for our children on each new housing unit built in our great city to assist with the infrastructure needs of our schools.
Does that require legislative approval?
It would, and I think we need to do that.
Okay, I'm just clarifying.
Oh, I'm well aware of it.
All right.
Building in a great city like Carson City and attending great schools is a privilege. Carson City School District is excited to see continued growth in our community, but always has reservations about our ability to provide adequate space for increased enrollment in our schools. With 203 additional single-family units, we would project about 63 students across all grade levels, 29 at the elementary level, which would currently be zoned for Fritch, like you heard, 14 at Carson Middle, 19 at Carson High. Fritch is nearly at capacity as the student population has grown by 10%, which is our greatest increase in the district. Unfortunately, rezoning would reduce. The population would be complicated, which would be for the nearest by schools would be Borderwick and Mark Twain, which are already at capacity, and also for the, which would be seen for the subdivision still has growth at Silver Oak subdivision. Carson Middle School is overcapacity and Carson High is at capacity. We're actively attempting to reduce the population of Carson Middle School with an expansion planned right now at Eagle Valley. We have an architect getting ready to go under contract, and we hope to have that expansion by not this next school year, but the school year after that starting. The impact for 19 students for Carson High to a student body of 2,300 would be minimal, but the continued growth in all areas to the city adds up to a concern for Carson City School District. Regardless of the board's decision on this project, the district has capacity concerns across most of the schools as we continue to remedy the situation. Last year, we expanded Pioneer High School, Mark Twain in Fremont, and we plan on doing Eagle Valley this next year. If the developer of this project would consider some type of voluntary impact fee that would be remitted to the school district similar to what the developer did to Lampa Ranch, who was very generous and agreed to do this to help expand our facilities, would be very helpful. Thank you for considering Carson City School District's comments and concerns. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mark, and on behalf of our board, thanks for the school district for, I know you guys got a lot of different pulls going on you right now.
We do.
And, you know, I guess you could say, you know, no more development in this town.
And we don't want that. We think this is a great city, and we're a great school district that feeds off of a great city, and we work with this, the group that's sitting here with you on everything that happens, and we feed off of it, and we do the best we can. And I'm the project manager for the school district, and I stay busy, and I'm going to be coming back to these people over here with an SUP and expanding Eagle Valley. It keeps coming, and it keeps coming to these guys. We wish we could go to the legislature that has an impact fee. We think it needs to happen. It happens on the bigger level at Clark and at Washoe, and it needs to happen to help us because we have no funding source to help us. We do have a funding source, and the funding source to help us build our schools doesn't keep up with the growth that's happening because you know how the growth is happening. Right now, it's impacting Nevada, and it's impacting Carson, it's impacting Washoe, and it's impacting our state, but the funding source is not keeping up with the growth. But like I said, we're growing, but we're doing our best to keep up with it.
Okay, just one last question.
Sure.
Just my identification. Where are you on the rollover bonds?
That's an AJ question, and I'm not sure where the rollover, I can answer it. We are, we're just getting our, the first part of that, and that's doing Eagle Valley right now. I can't answer that, and we've got only like 10 or 11 million dollars on that, and that's where we're doing Eagle Valley.
Okay.
And a few other smaller projects with that.
Okay. Just for the record, historical record, since I'm an old guy, I went to high school in Carson Middle School. Okay, thanks, Mark.
You're welcome. Thank you very much.
All right. Further public comment?
There you go.
You've been there before. Put the light, put the microphone on.
My name is Bepsi Strasberg, Richard Nagel. We live on Tahoe Drive, which is on the southeast corner of the development. I never thought I would delve into so much into Title 17, Title 18, but here I am. That, I went back to the website and looked at Title-10, which was enacted by the Board of Supervisors in 2006, and I really was interested in finding out why did the Board of Supervisors enact that ordinance? And the purpose, the very first paragraph in that title says, "The purpose of this chapter is to set forth regulations to permit variation of lot size, including density transfer subdivision, in order to preserve or provide open space, protect natural, cultural, and scenic resources, achieve a more efficient use of land, minimize road building, and encourage stable cohesive neighborhoods offering a mix of housing types." I asked the Board of Supervisors, does this application provide natural, cultural, and scenic resources? Does it minimize road building? Does it encourage stable cohesive neighborhoods? If the purpose of the ordinance is not satisfied, why are we even entertaining the subparts of this title to test for compliance? The very first bullet on the applicant's presentation, it said, "The regional trail automatically required the need of open space." I'm not very familiar with a lot of these things, but as far as I read somewhere, that the uniform trail map does not need to be contiguous. So it could be on the other side of Anderson Ranch and not start on the Mountain Street side. If the purpose is not fulfilled, I believe that the Board of Supervisors are faced with the go-no-go tollgate decisions. The taxpayers of Carson City elected this official body to ensure that the purpose was fulfilled. Number two, I am a visual person. I wish the applicant had provided a computer simulation of all the one-story and two-story, et cetera, because I have a hard time visualizing that. And I'm going to speak loudly, so I don't think I need the map. Oh, okay. Okay. So I drew this, I did this by scale. So this is about four inches, which is 36 feet. So one inch is equal to nine feet. The one-story homes is about 2.5, which is about 24 feet. And this little, tiny little stubs is one foot higher than me, a six-foot person looking at the, from my backyard, I can see a massive amount of masonry. That, to me, does not, is not cohesive to the neighborhood. We have larger lots, about, my lot is about 10, 11,000 square feet, single-story brick. This is not going to be similar to what I'm going to see at the back, from my backyard, and neither is anybody else, because you can look at any direction, and all you're going to see is roofline, 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 and no amount of vegetation or DG is going to hide those things. Point number three. Point number three, I've heard bits and pieces of what is it going to cost the taxpayer in this discussion. There were 203K from the residential tax. The Almsby Winnie Extension, 40,000. My background is in finance, and for such a massive project, I would have expected all the i's dotted and the t's crossed to have a detailed P and L cash flow over five years to show us what is the net investment the developer is doing, and what is the investment we, the taxpayer, have to do to make this possible. Point number four, in many parts of the application, the statements, there are statements such as, "The proposed density complements existing housing in the area and will not change the overall development style of the neighborhood. The project will be complementary to surrounding development in terms of height and setbacks. The project is designed to be consistent with adjoining neighborhoods. Proposed density is comparable to the existing neighborhood." I am not a no-development person. I expect a development to happen in that empty Anderson ground, but none of those statements are true to that picture. I urge the Board of Supervisors and the mayor to create a task force of the developer, the neighbors, and the city staff to completely assess the impact of this development so it is aesthetically more compliant with the west side of Carson City, the capital of Nevada, and a stone's throw from the historic district. Please listen to our neighbors. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Bepsi. By the way, was the trailhead on Mountain Street there where you bought your home?
It's at the other end of Mountains. We're in the middle of Mountain Streets.
Right.
At the, at the, or end of Mountain Street.
Yeah, the trailhead is where the old hospital is, so it's further up, and it's currently used for parking cars for the hospital and patients, et cetera.
Okay, thank you.
This is, this is my house, right here. Thank you.
Hey, good afternoon. My name is Richard Nagel.
Good evening. Good evening. I wish it was afternoon.
I'm sorry, good evening.
Sorry, Richard, go ahead.
I've had sinus surgery.
You're all right, man, go.
Okay, I appreciate that. I just, again, it's the density of the houses that are, that bother me. If you look at some of the designs they have, it looks like they're, they use a shoehorn to get them next to each other, and that doesn't complement good neighbors. And I think that people need to have some space between each other to breathe and to, you know, not hear the person flush the toilet next door. And these things are really close to each other, the way it looks and the way the models looked. We saw the development that was south of Carson that looked really nice, and those houses were beautiful. If we had something like that and that kind of spacing in between houses, that would be perfectly fine. I would love to see that place developed, but I think we need the right development that we can afford, that won't impact our schools radically, that won't financially impact our city in years to come, with other things. Again, you know, when they talk about the association that was supposed to maintain the water drainage areas, there was a place in San Jose, California, a few years back, that failed to maintain it, and they had a flood, and the city had to pay for all the houses to be rebuilt. And can we withstand that? I just, I just, I want it to be affordable for us, you know, because again, I own a house here, and I'm the one that's going to be stuck with the bill.
Did you, did you hear from, who was it, Rob? Who spoke to the flood FEMA stuff? Steve? Did you hear his analysis of that, of the regional flood management plan? Did that, did that tell you anything?
I'm sorry, Bob, I just, I think it's, you know, again, these guys would have an association, but I think it needs to be worded that they be completely responsible for what they're doing, and such that the city doesn't have to take over and bail them out.
I got you.
Because in California, the city of San Jose had to pay millions to get everybody back in order again, because somehow it was the city's fault, when it was the association that was responsible for it.
I think that, I got, I got you. I think we can handle that, okay?
Thank you, Bob.
Thank you, Richard. All right. All right, further public comment?
Hi, my name's Jason Prock. Thank you for your time. I am a west-side resident off of West Long, and I also understand what's happening in this community, the region, housing crises, infill, but I also understand open space, parks, what Carson City is, and what Carson City we grew up in, or what I grew up in. So I know I got a lot of good information, and I appreciate that. I want to talk about the region right outside of the development. We talked about the cross streets. One of them's close to my house. Okay, fine. But I commute through the west side of Carson every day. I go down Division Street and Curry Street. How wide are those streets? Everyone's parking on those streets. People drive down the middle of the road so they don't hit the cars parked on the streets. I have some quick numbers, and these probably aren't even right. 200 houses with just two people. Sure, we're going to have families, right? 400 people. Two houses times two cars. Well, I'm sure those kids are going to have some cars too. That's 400 cars. So I would like the board to look into, and maybe city staff, to look into regional mode of transportation around there. Do we, has the city thought about making Curry and Division one-way streets? We are clogged up. I need to take a break.
That's fine. Take a break, collect your thoughts.
Also, oh, also, I know, it's been great to hear from city staff about maintenance, the ability to take over maintenance of a road, stormwater systems, everything that goes along with it. It's not just repaving or chip sealing. We have a problem in this town of actual roads deteriorating underneath our feet. So how are we going to take on more? My message is just doing this responsibly and looking to build the infrastructure prior to putting the people in there first, jamming them all in there, and then we're all going to pay for it.
Okay.
Thank you for your time.
You bet, Jason. Thank you. All right. Mr. French for a second time today. Good evening.
You count that against me?
Huh?
Oh, she does. Excuse me. Thank you, Denny French, Carson City, Nevada, and thank you for pointing that out, mayor. I'm already nervous enough.
That's all right. Slow down and don't be nervous. You know, you're welcome here. Come on.
Right, first off, ditto, so I don't try to repeat things that I would have no real understanding, but with having you said such, Ms. Strasberg. So ditto to that. The next thing is, the next commenter, also ditto. The next, I'm going to contribute my own involvement here relating to a movie called Frenchie with Shirley, I'm sorry, Shelley Winters and Joel McCreary, sheriff that came to the rescue of a tough young lady. In the part of the show, the word came up, and it's malinise. Well, I can't pronounce it now. It's M-A-L-A-I-N-I-N-S-E, and it means, with regard to everyone's preparations and their displays, and all of the comments, and all of the questions that people have answered for me, I appreciate them all, but some things are just, the definition of this particular word being just wrong. There are just so many parts that just don't fit. I'm not against development, certainly for that. I certainly am a tree hugger and a bug lover, and those things and views and such, and open space, but I understood that this area was going to be developed, and so be it, but I don't feel that this project fits as, as was already suggested. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Denny. It's always good to have you back. Don't worry, I'm just teasing you a little bit.
I'll get better. I'll get better at that. Thank you.
All right. Further public comment? Here's the, Emiliano, go.
Emiliano Curió, for the record. Well, my time living in Carson, you get to know about the types of buildings people are used to seeing here. Nice houses, medium-to-large-sized lawns where dogs and kids can play, right? Medium-sized roads where you can take your kids to school, go back, go to work, come back and have a nice evening, or have a nice night. What I see here is an amazing project that simply spills out economic growth or profit. You take a pretty large sum amount of land, and you fit around the right amount of houses to trip or quadruple profit by construction. These how, these types of models are seen in different parts of cities and other more condensed urbanized parts of the world. I used to live in like similar condominiums in Mexico and even in Israel. Now, seeing this here, knowing how the size of the streets, size of the schools, size of the supermarkets are developed here in Carson, this doesn't seem like the right type of construction here. We're used to seeing nice conservative homes, housing four to five people. This type of construction could probably, most likely, hurt the infrastructure of the city.
How?
Well, roads are being used more, more cars are being plowed down the roads, more people are developing traffic.
So you're in favor of shutting the gates?
Excuse me?
You're in favor of closing the gates, no more development?
No, not no more development. Development, development in a healthy rate. I'm not saying.
How do you define that, Emiliano?
Huh?
How do you define that?
In a, in a perfect rate so that we can develop our city in every aspect without overdeveloping some of it. If we overdevelop infrastructure, housing capability, we can see deteriorations in schools, we can see deteriorations in infrastructure without the city capable enough to repair it. And this is probably the main concern for these people. These people are concerned that they're These people are concerned that their tax dollars will go to the city, will go deeper into the infrastructure that they didn't need to pay at one hand. Now, I can see the other side as well. We want a better, more developed city so that we can receive more income, right? More inhabitants, more income, more growth. But at the same time, I think this model isn't reassuring the people around it. It isn't making it seem like a safe, like, addition to our neighborhood. It's something completely different that the people who are living around it aren't used to. So the best thing to do is to reconsider a different project or a different point of view so that people around this community don't feel smothered, don't feel on the spotlight. That's pretty much it.
For those of you out there who think I'm hard on Emiliano, he is my shadow for the last three months and probably for future, and I'm going to tell you, he's one bright kid. So, thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
I had to ask him some questions to put him a little bit to the test there, so, anyway. All right.
Good evening.
Hi.
Thank you. Oh, someone on? There you go. Sorry. Good evening. My name is Leigh Anne Saram, for the record, and I'm hoping you guys got my letters that I.
We did.
Or the letter that I emailed.
We did. It was a very well-written letter.
Well, thank you. Good, good Carson teachers that taught English, Mrs. Cooper.
I had motorx, so good deal. That's good.
Anyways, basically, I, as I, I want to go over some, reiterate a little bit what was in my letter, but also bring up a few other points. You know, like I said, four generations of living and being born in Carson City, I'm very concerned with the precedents that we set for new development, the size of the lots, the proximity of the homes, the infill and the, and the consistency and equity of the neighbors that are around for all of Carson City, not just this particular development. I've been on many other, you know, committees and things to, to address development. Not against it, but I do think that it needs to be very well thought out and controlled. And we need to preserve Carson City for the great place it is and, and why people want to come here. We don't want to make it something that people don't want to come here anymore or don't want to join certain neighborhoods. You know, everybody loves Carson City for the hometown feel we have, and I just am wanting to promote, to continue that. So I'm going to refer to my notes a lot here. Sorry to look down, but I don't want to miss anything. One of the things that I've heard consistently throughout a lot of staff reports and everything was quoted, "It's in the master plan." It was, it was planned through the master plan. It's part of our master plan. It's what we want. Well, if I'm not mistaken, I mean, the master plan is, was, you know, thought to be the best fit for the land. And currently, it's, the zoning for this piece of property is not being met by this development proposal. The land, it's very misleading, I think, to people when they purchase their homes and they come into areas, when they look at the master plan zoning under, I think it's called chapter title 18, with the tentative maps, and you see, uh, single-family 12,000 square foot lots zoned next to your home, or single-family 6,000 lots next to your home. That's where the, that's where this development is. And it's very misleading when, then 1710 can be applied and is so drastically changes what was expected by the neighbors next to it. I don't live directly next to this property, but I think that it's important enough for everyone in Carson City to stand up and listen to what new developments are going on and whether the people that are living around them need support and help to understand what's going on around them. This piece of property, I don't feel, as others have said, that we totally fit every part of the 1710. In my reading of it, and I have a copy here, but, you know, it talks about major constraints or constraints of the property, such as steep grades, wetlands, other things. I do agree that there is a planned trail which did impact the, the property. But I don't think that that had to impact the lot size as much as it has, as dramatically as it had. Eighty-four percent of this land is currently zoned in the master plan for 12,000 square foot lots. That's 146 lots. Only one single lot in this entire proposal meets that. One out of 203. I have a list of, if you want to see, I have a list of them. Believe it or not, I can go through the whole thing. I'm not going to bore you. There's one at 14,930. There's two at between 10,700 and 10,900. There's seven between 9,400 and 9,900. I mean, I can go through the whole thing. I have every one of them charted out. And I can, and I'm kind of going to get to that here. There's 176 lots, less than 7,700 square feet, with 125 of those at only 5,000 square feet. 5,000 square foot lots are almost nonexistent in Carson. I did a very in-depth study through the assessors' books, books one, three, and seven, which are from basically Carson Street, all on the west side. And out of 4,597 single-family lots in the master plan, there is almost nonexistent. There is only a few PUDs, such as the middle of Silver Oak and a few down at the end of Sea Hill. There's some, there's, a few small pockets that have a few. But if you look at the vast majority of all the surrounding neighborhoods, there is not anywhere near 5,000 square foot lots. And where there is lots that are close to the 6,000, they are much wider than the proposed 50-foot-wide lots with five-foot setbacks that they're proposing. Okay, let me get back to my notes here so I don't forget something. There are three lots, like I said, greater than 10,000 square feet, only three. There are only 27 lots total greater than 7,700 square feet. Yet, 84% of this was zoned in the master plan, which was put together by people who thought the master plan was the best fit for this land and the best fit for the surrounding neighborhoods. It just does not add up to me. I am not against a development going in here. I just think we need to rearrange these lots and the lot sizes and the way they're being applied to be consistent and fair and economical to Carson City, to the neighboring residents, and, and everyone involved. Okay, let me keep going here.
Okay. Good time.
Thank you. I have been to every meeting that I have known about, about this, back from the vintage all the way through tonight. And I have heard a common theme from everyone. Yes, everyone is worried about traffic and water and flooding and all kinds of things. But one consistent thread that I have heard over and over is the lot sizes. And that seems to be something within 1710 that we all together can actually address and can actually have an impact to help make it a better situation for both the, the neighboring residents, Carson City, and the developer. And I'll get into that later.
Did I read your letter right that you're, that you suggested we do where the green?
Yeah, I did. And, and that was actually brought up with, there was about 50 people at a meeting that was held at the Fandango, and it was a majority of the people that were there. I'm not going to say everyone would be, you know, would, would be for that. I understand. But kind of my, my argument, and most of the people that were in attendance at this meeting, said that, yes, the buffer zones would, would, of open space may not be there. However, you're having one lot or, and one home that abuts your house instead of two or three homes that are right in front of your view. When, to me, okay, and that's in my notes here, proximity of homes, how close they are is a major part of the feeling of density. Your perception of density has to do with the proximity of the homes, not how many homes are in one certain area, in, in my, in my opinion. Right now, we have side setbacks that are five feet. And in fact, in the proposal, during their presentation, they kind of showed two homes right next to each other. Those roof lines can actually be almost six feet apart. You could almost jump from roof line to roof line. That does not at all seem consistent to what is around in the same, in the areas, much less spreading a fire, no privacy, and they, they will practically look like they're connected. You won't even have trees between. You cannot get a tree in a five-foot setback with a roof line overhanging on both sides. You can't even have trees between these homes. I mean, everybody says, "Oh, millennials, nobody wants any larger lots anymore." Personally, that is not true from people that have grown up and have been here. My, my three children are all grown now. I've got one having a baby. They all are looking for some space to have their children and have their dogs run around. And they're, I, I disagree with the fact that we all want these tiny little lots. I think in Carson City, we are looking for a place to be able to have a family and spread out and be able to enjoy rather than feeling like you're on top of your neighbor right next door. Let me, I'm jumping down, but I'm getting to the end.
Don't worry.
Like I said, I think that having one home and one lot abutting your house, if it was my backyard, I would much rather have one and a lot size that was consistent with mine rather than a small 10-foot buffer space and then three homes right behind my house. It just has a much more dense feel because of the proximity of the homes being crammed together. Open space to me, just for the sake of open space, is not always beneficial. It can actually be unsafe. It can, it can bring vandalism. I know personally, I've had issues with open space behind my house. I've had people come and vandalize and have problems in my own backyard. So these types of, some of these buffer zones, even though they appear to be, you know, a good, great buffer zone, and I think we could have larger setbacks on the rear for the surrounding neighbors, but basically, they also will, they're not able to be seen, they're not able to be patrolled, and people can get into those backyards without anybody seeing them. That's my, that's another one of my, my considerations. Lastly, I don't think 1710, in its true spirit, was meant to be applied to a very level infill, small project like this. There is not constraints. It even asks to have key considerations for those types of constraints. And things that we're really gaining, now, we are gaining a pathway on the left side or the south side. And I agree that that could still be part of it. And I'm not saying that every lot has to be 12,000 square feet. I'm just saying that we should reevaluate 5,000 square foot in these smaller lots. We don't have a comparison of what's around them. This is one thing that I think just can actually be addressed. The other traffic, the, the other, there's not a lot of solutions. We've got to have cars that come out of a neighborhood. You can't stop that. There's going to be children that go to the schools. I'm on a lot of the school district boards. I know what's going on, not the boards, the committees, excuse me. But, you know, I mean, I get that there's impact. But one thing we can do is, is the less impact of these tiny, small 5,000 square foot lots in the smaller lots than people were planning on. I think it can be a win-win-win for, for everyone. I really do. I think the city and the community would win because we're not going to set a precedent of this kind of, you know, development and crammed houses right on top of each other. I think the neighbors, of course, would win because they're going to be much happier with lots that are more consistent and, and next to their homes, a lot less feeling of density. And I think Christie Corporation will win as well. They'll still be able to do their development. They'll, they'll, they'll have happier neighbors next to them during the, the years of construction that we're going through. If they work together with us, come together and come up with some lot sizes that are a little bit more palatable to everyone. Thank you for your time. I really appreciate it.
Thanks for being a fourth-generation Carson City.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening. Good evening. For the record, my name is Rochelle Ressam. I've been a Nevada resident for about 36 years. And I'm actually for this project. In the time that I've lived here, I've been looking to purchase a home on the West Side. And it's difficult because of the, the low inventory in, in Carson. So with that, this project brings chance for not only myself, but other people to, to come and live here, especially on the West Side. My concerns are, for the lot that I'm looking, I'm interested in, is I wouldn't want a two-story behind a single story if that's what I chose to purchase. Because I wouldn't want somebody lurking, you know, down into my house. The other concern is, is I'm not a big fan of HOA fees, regardless if they're low or not. So what I'm proposing is, I agree with the lot sizes. Some of them are small. If, even if you lessened the 203 lots down to, you know, 150-ish, that would give you a chance to have more spaces between the houses so they're not pretty much on top of each other. And, or even lessen your buffer areas, which is nice. It makes the area look nice. But I agree with the gal that was just talking. You know, you kind of invite people that are walking around or vandalism or, you know, kind of searching for things to do in areas that aren't theirs. But that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Rochelle. Further public comment? Yes, sir. Good evening.
Good evening.
Push it again, your, push the button. It's green there. There you go.
Green, there we go. Hi, David Lambin, and I've been in Carson City now for two years. Moved here from Chicago in '95 with my family and spent most of it down in Gardinerville and part of it up in Reno as well. My dog in a hunt right now is I live on the corner of Bolero and the 30-foot DMZ. I have simple hopes for this project. One is that they don't backfill and, you know, raise the project up above the balance of us because every time it rains well, I feel like putting a life preserver out in front of my house as the street completely fills. And then as we talk about privacy, I guess I'm going to get a new walkway on the side of my house that I'm hoping they have some kind of a fence for, or screening. On the same token, I'm thrilled to see it. I'm a big believer with, when you're green, you're growing. When you're ripe, you rot. And they're bringing in 200 families, and I'm thinking about all the restaurants and shopping that goes on downtown. The development that has come on after the freeway went off to the side. The downtown looks beautiful. It's very boutique-ish. It's very, I spent a lot of time there and thoroughly enjoy it. As far as the sizes, yeah, it takes my breath away a little bit. But again, West Side of Chicago, the Berwin bungalows, we used to have, you know, a three-foot gangway that walked between the homes, and it went on and on and on. And when you talk about streets in the same area, you could park on both sides, but there was room for one car in the middle. Heaven forbid you got down the block and the other guy was a little more belligerent than you were. But, you know, you learn to live with it. It becomes part of it. You know, people love New York. People love those parts of Chicago. Those homes, those bungalows are cherished almost in some ways. And that was all done in the 40s, and it was all done for economics. And that's one of the reasons why you compact all that. It may not be in the cost of the home, but it is also in how much you have to put in as far as sewers and everything else. You get a little more density. I do have kind of a hard time believing that 200 families are ongoing to generate 60 kids.
The birth rates are going down in the United States.
I guess, you know, more than, you know, zero population growth they used to talk about. But, but again, I'm very thrilled to see it all happening. And again, there's going to be a lot of impact that goes. And again, there's gonna be a lot of, uh, impact that goes on with the, the city itself, uh, a lot of growth. And again, I like seeing, uh, things change. And as far as, you know, where I'm at, uh, my house is built in 79, I believe, and, you know, things were different back then. And when I, uh, was thinking of buying, I looked at a lot of places in DeMonte Ranch, and they were the same construction. They shared a wall for a garage, you know? There was one, the first one I looked at, uh, you walked out the back door, and it had a nice, uh, like living room-sized patio, and right next to it was a jogging path. It was, uh, standing up in my back, what could have been my backyard, I was looking at people's feet. And right beyond that was another wall where they were gonna put another, uh, development above it again. This isn't gonna accommodate any of that. All that two-story work going on in the middle, you know, if the people want it, they got a choice to buy it. If they need the space, there's Gardinerville and Dayton. So I really appreciate, uh, it, it coming in. I like it, uh, and again, I'm, I'm looking at it, uh, and instead of, um, you know, looking at coyotes, uh, you know, I'll be looking at people walking. It's, it all works. But again, I appreciate all the effort that they put into it, and I do appreciate, uh, the green belt that goes around.
Didn't you get your, did we get his first name?
David.
David, thanks. I'm getting a harder hearing in these days.
I remembered to bring my hearing aids today, too.
Well, I got the word DMZ because that put, put some pictures in my mind real quick. So anyway, all right.
It's 30 feet, and, uh, that's, uh, when I went, uh, I actually climbed a barbed wire fence and paced it off, and there's, uh, two fences, one that is on my property and the one that's, uh, divides it, uh, and it's 30 feet away. I keep looking at it and saying, you know, that's a lot of space. Um, and, um, I really kind of appreciate that. And then again, an additional 20 feet before the next house, and, and they've made the offer on the north side to make them all, uh, single. So assuming that they don't raise the, uh, grade and assuming that they don't put, uh, hugely peaked homes up there, then, you know, my view is which a lot of people talk about, but the density, I'm now on a street that's gonna be used. Right now, it's a barbed wire fence. Um, then I'm hoping that it, uh, I hope it doesn't get used a whole lot, but, you know, I can't afford to buy the, the property, so I get to just, uh, enjoy the growth.
So your neighbors are, uh, is it Ray Badger or Scott, uh, who, who your neighbors to the north?
Um, Scott Baker is, uh, two homes down, and he's on the corner of Long and Bolero. And, um, you know, I'm only on a first-name basis with, uh, the other, there's only five homes in that part of the street. But, um, they're all nice people. I'm probably the youngest one there.
Okay.
But...
Thank you, David.
Thank you.
Anything else?
And appreciate, you know, appreciate all your good efforts on our behalf.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Try and be Solomon. All right.
I'm Suzanne Fox. You've probably seen me here before. I live on the west side of Ormsby. We'll get to that in a few years, again, I imagine. But I own the house next door to Maxine, where my mother used to live, and I have some wonderful tenants living there. I hope they never move or die. But now, my background is not in engineering or finance or construction. My background is in language and theater, so, uh, I'm going to approach this from this side. And Mr. Mayor, I think you said that you were visualizing some pictures. I'm going to approach this from that point of view, so forgive me if I don't seem to be getting too close to the point.
Don't worry about it. One of the other pictures...
Worry about it when it happens.
One of the other pictures I have on my mind is, I grew up on West Sunset.
Okay.
I went around the world and came back and live, now live in the backyard of where I grew up, and I will tell you that, the field we're talking about, we used to go out there and have cowpaddy fights, and it was a great thing to have just the right consistency of a cowpaddy where you could throw it and it would dirty up the other person.
I, I believe you on that.
There's a picture. So I appreciate, you know...
And I have friends who are ranchers, so I'm sure they've done the same as you have. But first, let me thank you for scheduling this meeting so that some of our neighbors who work nine-to-five can be here, and I will do my best to be brief. Um, get out your skis, folks, because we are on a slippery slope with the cattle gone and the cows are not coming home, so I guess we can party, uh, and the water in the dishes turned off. The frogs have packed up their peeping and croaking and departed for wetter pastures. It's quieter at night, but the geewee, which is coyote in Washu, uh, in the, still celebrate a kill with a chorus of screams, and I do hear them frequently. Often dinner is the cat or small dog that a newbie has, uh, not thinking, left outside. Of course, the memdewee, and that means deer, are happily chowing down on the new homers' expensive landscaping. And, and I think the developers should keep that in mind and get deer-resistant landscaping when they landscape. And with the warmer winters, the bear, who are the, the more day, they don't den up in the winter anymore. Why bother when dinner is readily available at the swipe of a paw knocking over a full garbage can that, again, a newbie has left outside for several days until pickup day? And they always seem to manage to drag it across the street into my yard, so that's how we meet my neighbors, by picking up the garbage that the bears left. You meet a lot of nice people that way. But never fear, with the zoning laws eviscerated, the rabbit warrants where our new neighbors have bought their affordable, and I say that in quotes, affordable, homes, won't be calling 911 or the Department of Wildlife at all hours. And yes, you're gonna need more 911 people, and you're gonna need more wildlife people to answer those phones. Uh, they are, they'll be calling at all hours. With that slippery slope chopped into more than half of the lot sized eight to an acre, now I know there won't be that many because you've got heavy driveways and such, but it'll be pretty close. There won't be room for wildlife, not even a covey of quail underneath a juniper bush, which by the way, are deer-resistant. This cutting and pasting of the approximately 45 acres of the development area under title 1710, this is not compatible with the surrounding area, and I won't go into detail because my neighbors who are engineers and experts in that sort of field, uh, have very well covered. On almost all sides, there are long-established homes on much larger lots, so that many of the current residents have two housing, houses backing up to them. You might have one house in the middle, then you'll have a half a house on one side and half a house on the other, and that's the, that's the width of your lot. So you've got a lot of people, um, looking over into your property. There will no longer be the views of the majestic Sierra Nevada, and I know that you can't legislate the views, but you can consider the property values and whether or not, uh, they will, uh, be diminished. Uh, but there will be plenty of sounds to share, a TV turned too loud, and you know that many of us work graveyard shift. This is a 24-hour state, trying to sleep in the daytime, a toilet flushing next door, yes, and the cringe-worthy yelling of a knock-down, drag-out domestic quarrel. Uh, yes, and here we are, we're sliding yet a little further down the slope in, right into the so-called open space, a couple of retention basins with a bit of mud and gravel and weeds and trash at the bottom. So go on, kids, go play in the retention basin, you'll have lots of fun. What a great place for retirees to sit in the sunshine and chat or play a no-stakes game of checkers or whatever they like to do. I suppose I'm a senior citizen, too, but I don't have time to sit in the sunshine because I'm too busy doing this sort of work. And don't count on the HOA to properly maintain anything. I have experience with HOAs, and there are always a couple of people who take it over and impose ridiculous restrictions on all the people in the neighborhood, and then somehow the funds to the HOA dry up and they can't maintain what they're supposed to maintain, and voila, it ends up on the city to maintain these properties. And in any event, I urge you, please, to delay the approval of this document until studies by unbiased, that is not from the developer, third parties can be undertaken. There's the cost of increased traffic, the cost for emergency services, overburdened schools, and so many other issues that have not properly been considered in the city's haste to add tax dollars to its coffers. It doesn't add up, folks. And here we are, down at the bottom of the slope, and, uh, our skis have fallen off. So thank you very much for allowing all of us to share our perspective on this proposed project, and I hope that we will have some reasonable restrictions on the size and type of the development as well as all the other things like landscaping, light pollution, and the list goes on. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Suzanne. Okay. I raised a question. What, is there a down, like, down, a downlight requirement?
The lighting standards are dark sky compatible.
Are what?
Dark sky compatible, so yes, it, it aims down.
Okay, thank you. Further public comment? Is this the mayor of, mayor of Mountain Street?
Mayor of Mountain Street, there you go.
Do you want to come up here and I'll take your place?
I, I feel so privileged that you called me that, Mayor. Uh, my name is Patrick Anderson. I live at 1502 Mountain Street. I'm on the half-acre lot that you see in the northeast, northeast corner of the property, uh, and I am here to express my support for the project. Um, some of you may remember, I also supported the vintage. Um, I actually looked at the assisted living component of that project and thought down the road that that could be a very valuable piece of our housing inventory here in Carson City. I may have been one of a handful of people that felt that way. Um, most of the people that live over there on, in the neighborhood and the surrounding community, um, really didn't like that piece, didn't like that commercial aspect, and were very vocal about it. And, um, so now we have a project before us where we do not have any of that commercial element. Um, it's strictly a residential housing development. Um, and, you know, there have been concerns expressed about the roadways. Um, I will say this, that I'm sensitive to those people who live on those streets on the north and south borders. Um, they've effectively lived on private streets for a long time, but if you stand at any of those dead ends and you look across the field, you're looking right at the other end of the roadway. So, I mean, I can't say that I was there when the, those developments were built, but to me, it just seems like common sense that somebody had the foresight to look ahead and go, yeah, we need to have connectivity here to make this all work. And, um, in my, I would hope that we would never have to endure anything like the campfire in paradise, but if there was one lesson to be learned from that experience is that you cannot have enough connectivity in a neighborhood. You cannot have enough ways for people to get out and get mobilized and, and get out of the way if something tragic were to occur. So to me, again, while I'm sensitive to those people that live along those, um, along those roads, I think the connectivity is important. Uh, one of the things that we heard in the vintage proposal was, you're going to build a community within a community. You're gonna be this isolated enclave with gates and, and all of this stuff. You're not really gonna be part of the neighborhood. Well, if we, if we make, block those roads off, we're right back in the same boat. We're right back in the same boat. So, um, as for the school district, you know, I have a tremendous amount of respect for Richard Stokes and the management team that he has over there at the school district. Uh, I have limited, um, experience with the school board, but what I've always found, um, with both the dynamic between the management team and the school board itself, is that they've always been extremely accountable to the citizens of Carson City. They understand their primary job is to educate our young children, and they also understand that there is a fiscal impact associated with that, and they've always been highly accountable to those of us that pay taxes here in this community. So, um, I know they're running into challenges. Um, you know, there, there was talk years ago, Mayor, you know this, of building a second high school in Carson City, but I don't think Carson City wants to see their identity, the, the identity of the Carson Senators split into two different campuses. We lose so much as a, as a, as a community if we were to do that. So, yeah, there's issues there, there's problems there, but I don't think there are issues that can't be, um, overcome. Um, and, um, I, I'm, I'm not that worried about it, I guess. As for the road maintenance issues that have been brought up in the past, it, anytime that you have, uh, a funding mechanism that is a resource consumption-based funding mechanism, such as a gas tax, where, um, you're relying on that as a key component of your, of your funding stream, and yet at the same time, you're encouraging people to conserve consumption of this resource, sooner or later, you're gonna walk into a wall of having a deficit.
Amen.
You know, it happens, uh, with water, and, um, if you look at your water bill today, I think 80, 90% of my water bill are fixed costs, fixed, uh, fixed hard costs for water and sewer maintenance hookups and such. So we've, we've drifted away from the consumption side on the water bills here in town, and I think we need to do something similar on the gas, uh, tax as well. Now, if there's something that has to be, if that's something that has to be addressed at the, at the legislative level, then, um, you know, I suggest the people that, uh, that the city has, uh, you know, looking at this issue, um...
So that's an interesting topic. So are you suggesting that we have a demand charge on, when you go get gas? Is that what?
Well, I, I guess what I'm saying is that anytime you, you know, if you're trying to, we're dealing with this issue, um, in our program that I, I work for the Nevada Division of Environmental Protection and, for your son, actually, under your son. And, um, and, uh, I'm in the air program, and for years, we have funded our program on emissions fees, fees associated with the emissions that sources, um, emit out into the atmosphere. Yet at the same time, we're encouraging them to reduce those emissions. And, you know, the rubber finally hit the road for our program, and we've had to significantly change the way that we look at raising revenues to fund our program, because we do not get any general fund, uh, revenue from the state, uh, we're fee-funded. And, um, so we've shifted from this consumption or shifted from, um, weighting the resource side of it to more of, this is what it costs us to run this program. We have X number of permit riders, we have net X number of compliance inspectors, we have, you know, planning people, we have this, we have this, we have that. This is what it costs us to run this program. So we know what our costs are. Now the question becomes, how do you create a fee structure that can support those costs over time? And, um, I think that's where we're at with the roadways now, is that we're, we're looking at the expense of, of what it takes to maintain our roads, and we're finding that we have an inadequate fee structure to address those needs. So what do we do? How do we, how do we address that? I don't know the answer to that. If, um, you know, I'm, I'm sure it's not rocket science, I'm sure it couldn't be, uh, addressed and there couldn't be proposals, um, put forth, um, if, if, if it involved, uh, increasing taxes within the, within the city itself, and you, I think you'll find out real fast how quick, how badly people need really smooth roads, um, if you present to them a, a, a series of, uh, options and say, look, this is how it's gonna, this is how much it's gonna cost if you wanna drive on a perfectly pristine roadway, here's, here's this sticker, you know, but if you're willing to accept something a little less than here, you know, so on and so forth. So I know there's concerns about the roadway, um, maintenance and roadway expenses, but I don't think that's a, a reason to deny this project. I wanted to address a comment that I made at the Planning Commission, which drew quite a few snickers, so I wanted to, um, you know, elaborate on that comment a little bit so that people understood where I was coming from. And the comment that I made was that I felt that this project was entirely consistent with the west side. And... And I think the reason that people snickered as much as they did was because they're hung up on this density issue. So, one, it's a residential housing development. Two, it is in compliance with our municipal code. Whether you like it or not, it is in compliance with the regulations that we have in place. When I go walking with my wife around the west side, what I see are little subdivisions, little pockets of housing that grew over time, and a lot of them don't look like the housing that's right next door to them. You know, like, "See, you had this little housing development, and then this little piece came together, and then this little piece came together, and then this little piece came together." And the only thing that binds them, the only thing that makes it look consistent, is the fact that the vegetation on the west side is largely very mature. So, but it doesn't stick out like a sore thumb, like, "Oh, my God, this just doesn't belong over here," even though they're very different. I guess the inconsistency of the west side housing development is one of the things that I like about it. It's not Damani Ranch, it's not South Meadows, you know? It's not this cookie cutter Stepford Housing Division. It's very just unique and quaint. And so, on this density of the smaller homes, I talked to Mark Turner, because, you know, Mark and I are friends, and I golf over there at Silver Oak, and I see these little, you know, properties along the fairway, and I asked him, I said, "You know, how do people like these things? I mean, they look pretty tight." He goes, "They love them. They absolutely love them." Now, who is the, who are these people that love these homes? Well, I don't know if it's millennials that don't want a yard, but I know a lot of elderly, as they grow older and they want to downsize, these are perfect sites for them, these are perfect homes for them, because they don't have all that yard work, and they don't have all that maintenance that they have to worry about. So, I mean, I can't predict who's going to buy those lots on the inside there. But I wouldn't be surprised if you saw quite a few older folks, you know? It would be nice to get some younger people moving into the community and, you know, lower the average age of the citizenry into here in town, but, you know, there's a lot of things that are going to have to change, I think, before Carson City becomes attractive to younger people. When I talk to the younger people that I work with at the office, you know, they like Reno, they like the clubs, they like the bars, they like all of that excitement, and, you know, that's just not, that's just not us. But, you know, one of these days, they're going to decide to have children, and they're going to realize that, you know, all that activity is, doesn't really fit my life anymore, you know? And, you know, I find, I would have never in a million years thought I would have settled down, raised my kids in Carson City. I grew up in San Diego and Hawaii. I was a Navy brat, you know? I've lived on the beach every day. And I absolutely fell in love with this town, and have loved every moment of the time I've spent here. And I've been in that house since, well, for twenty-two years now, since nineteen ninety-eight. I've been in town.
They've done a great job in your backyard.
Oh, thank you, thank you. It's coming along.
All right.
So...
Probably gets a tumble mustard.
Yeah, you know, I do, I do hope that, we were trying, Hope and I and Alicia were trying to bang out some language on the break, and I do hope, and I do trust Scott and Mike, I do think that they're very sincere about addressing this issue. It's an issue that really hit the fan this year, but it's been out of control for some time. But because of the way that mustard weed propagates and how much seed, you can get thousands of seeds off of one plant, I know I'll be wrestling with, I mean, I already see it sprouting in my backyard, you know? So, yeah, it's just, it's way beyond my ability to just go out there with a rake and pile it up anymore and take it out to the curb. I can't take it out to the curb, you know? I've got my yard waste tote filled with it, I've got my garbage tote filled with it, I got three other cans filled with it, and it's not my trash. That's the thing that's most frustrating about it, is that it's not mine. And just because it blew into my yard doesn't convey ownership to me. But I end up getting stuck with it, you know? So, anyway, I'm getting off point a little bit. I do hope we can figure out something, you know, because delays happen. I would hope that they'd be able to get, take possession of the property if this is approved tonight and the sale goes through, you know, sometime by May, so that, you know, we could sit down and talk about, okay, here's what I have to offer as far as what you need to do to get this under control before you start moving dirt and actually building out here. But, you know, delays happen. You don't know what's going to happen in the economy, you don't know what's going to happen to funding. I mean, there's just so many ways that a project can get stalled. I do hope that we can come up with something that, whether it's the Andersons, or whether it's Christie Corp., that holds them accountable for keeping this, the fire hazard under control, and the debris that emanates from that field in the fall or the winter under control. I think that's it. I don't want to take any more time, and there's some other people that want to talk, so thank you very much for hearing me out and...
Thank you, Pat.
Yep.
Mayor of Mountain Street, thank you. Jason, how are you tonight?
Doing well, thank you. Jason Kitchinki for the record. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Board of Supervisors. I appreciate you hearing our comments. First, I want to commend you on the decision to allow the public to speak longer than three minutes. To me, that goes a long way to showing that you are genuinely interested in hearing what the public has to say, so I appreciate you and staff being here for this long and hearing us out, not rushing people along. That means a lot. You're extremely patient. So, first, I just would like to start off by echoing some comments from some of the fiscally-minded citizens who spoke. I am deeply concerned about the taxpayers, at the end of the day, having to hold the bag for things like roads, also for the flooding. I am, contrary to what Pat said, I am extremely concerned about the school situation, and, you know, ten percent growth in two years, by the time my kids are going to be in high school, that's going to be like a forty or fifty percent growth. So, that's extremely concerning to me. I would strongly support a voluntary impact fee for the schools from the developer. I think that would be fair. And I encourage the board to take this up as an issue over the next several years, because it is, particularly with all of the high-density developments that are going in, it's going to be a real issue real soon. I would also, you know, as far as the density, I mean, Pat said it meets the code. So, do we like it? You know, no, but it's maybe something that we have to live with. But I think, just hearing the public comment today, it might be an issue with the code, might be an issue with the density of the code, so that's maybe something that the board wants to take a look at in the future.
Jason, would you, you made a comment about your home being close to, your backyard being close to the walking trail?
Yeah, I'm getting around to that.
And they did some landscaping, and I just, I'm not certain that that cures the problem, at least at your one-through-seven homes.
I don't live in the one-through-seven, I believe, but...
Where do you live?
Off Valencia Court.
Say again?
Valencia. So, it's close to like the triple-blue trees right there on the northern periphery. But if I can may continue.
Sure.
One thing that I wanted to say was, I did want to commend Mr. Christie for volunteering to have a voluntary condition for single-story residences around the northern boundary. I think that that makes sense. I think it makes sense all the way around the whole boundary of the property, just from a recreational standpoint. My wife and I, we love trails, you know? It's a great way to lead an active lifestyle. We all work too much, we all get home too late, and it's nice to have a trail right in your neighborhood where you can go take your dog for a walk, take your kids for a walk, get out, get some exercise quickly, and go back home. So, I think that that's great, because it's going to enhance the experience from recreationists, having those single-story houses there. It's fabulous viewscapes around that property. That's one of the beautiful things about Carson City. I too, never thought that I was going to move to Carson City and love it. I've been here for about nineteen years now, and I absolutely love it myself. So, that's one of the best parts about those viewscapes. One other thing that I think would enhance the recreation, the public value of the recreation is just what you're talking about, is the buffer. Behind our house, we don't have a twenty-foot setback, we have a ten-foot setback, and you probably saw that in my letter. So, you know, for me, a thirty-foot buffer raises concerns of security and privacy, which ultimately equate to home value. So, I would like to see something more along the lines of the Long Ranch Estates. I've measured those boundaries, they're seventy-five feet, and that is sufficient to address those concerns. So, what I would like to see is something more along the lines like that, but a balance between the south, the southern boundary and the northern boundary. To me, the multi-use path on the southern end, it doesn't really make sense, because what are we linking to? I don't think that these trails are going to be used for folks to go up to Tahoe. What it's going to be used for is it's going to be used for residents that are in the area, and probably more so even by the people who work there, because a lot of that parking lot, the trailhead parking lot, is just completely full. So, this will be an extremely beneficial recreational amenity to those folks who work there, as well as live there. You do a nice little loop, it's going to be great. That thirty-foot buffer, that's just going to be a corridor. It's just a corridor. If you have a fifty or a seventy-five foot buffer, that's going to really enhance the recreational value of that. I think that that's possible to do if we get rid of these detention basins. We live in the driest state in the nation. There's no reason why we should be promoting turfed detention basins here. If we take that space in the middle there at the detention basins, and we widen the buffers out further, we can get closer to that seventy-five feet. I'm a hydrologist by profession, and I know that there are ways that, instead of directing the water to the detention basins, we can disconnect the flows and direct runoff to those boundaries. There's a linear ditch that runs along the side, along the northern boundary, that can be used to infiltrate the stormwater, and it could, it would be a nice little bio retention facility. You're going to be enhancing vegetation growth, you're planting trees there, developers are going to be planting trees. When we get runoff, it's going to, it'll infiltrate right in there, and it'll be supporting vegetation growth. Same thing along the southern boundary. So, I think that, you know, I don't want to just poke holes in this, I want to try and offer solutions as well. So, I think it's good, that's a win-win for the people that live on that boundary, and I also think that it's going to really increase the recreational value for residents and workers in the area. Lastly, last thing I would like to encourage is that, in my letter, I had, I pointed to this about sustainable development, and, you know, climate change is the greatest threat that our world is facing right now, and it's obviously at a national level that this is going nowhere, in fact, it's going backwards. So, I believe that this effort has to be locally led, and I think that you are in a position to do so. I would highly encourage the board to take a look at implementing some energy efficiency standards into the code, maybe not for a whole development, but at least a portion of the development, so that we can reduce our energy costs and greenhouse gas emissions that are a cause from developing these lands.
You kind of stole the end of my state-of-the-city address.
Oh, did I?
That's okay.
I'm sorry, I missed that one, sir.
Don't worry about it. I haven't given it yet, but I'll change it now. All right.
I don't give you credit.
Okay.
Okay, well, thank you very much. Appreciate your time.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. For the record, Maxine Meets, taxpayer, property owner, business owner, volunteer, and resident. I'm going to start with a few things that I disagreed with staff's statements on from early on. One statement was about the two-hundred-and-fifty square feet per lot open space, but isn't that, some of that in the, inside the private yards of the residences?
Up here.
Okay, well, some of that is inside, according to what I read in the CCMC.
Yeah, I got you.
Some of that is inside, so that is not all community recreational open space, it's people's yards, so...
I asked the applicant to address that issue after this public comment.
I also need to know, what is rock mulch? The green design print, um, air print is very disingenuous. It is not going to be green. It is going to be a ten-foot-wide standard concrete with adjacent three-foot-wide decomposed granite path and rock mulch. Now, I don't think, I don't know what rock is, rock mulch is, but it doesn't sound very green to me. And none of those others. Concrete is certainly not green, and neither is decomposed granite. So, I think that was very disingenuous of the applicant to make that green space-looking thing when it's not really going to be green space at all. Regarding the traffic, the stop sign at Mountain and Fleishman was put up not too long ago, and I was in contact with Mr. Pittinger, who was at the time the head of our Transportation Department regarding that, and he told me, which is different from what I heard here tonight, he told me that that was put up because of the vintage, the pressure of the vintage development, and it was also put up without warrants, which is a technical term that engineers use, that, and that it was paid for by the taxpayers. And now I'm hearing a completely different thing, and I wonder about how the citizens are supposed to operate in this town if we're hearing A and then not A.
I don't know what Patrick said to you, but he said just the opposite to me, because I asked the same question, so I'll have Lucia answer that right now. About the stop sign at Fleishman and Mountain.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I also talked with Patrick and with Darren Schultz, the Director of Public Works, and I was told that this was put in due to a warrant not related to vintage or any other project, but simply due to the conditions of the intersection at the time.
So, I don't, I don't know, how can I, how can I function as a citizen of this community, an educated and enlightened citizen of this community if I'm not being given the true statements by city officials? I also want to question the issue of the archaeologist. When I sat on the Planning Commission, we were privileged to go onto the land that became Silver Oak and to see the archaeology of where the Native Americans had come, where they come down in the wintertime, and they had come there and made their encampments and their fire pits and so forth. There's not a river flowing through the middle of Silver Oak. And so, I feel the same in this particular area, that I've been in touch with the tribe and with the Washoe Tribe, and I believe that we need to have an archaeologist on staff to make sure that, similar to the way it was handled at Silver Oak, those encampments were identified, and then they were encapsulated to protect them from, for future archaeology and study. So, that's something that I would like to see happen. I once thought that Carson City would be my forever home. You've heard here tonight or received emails about all the things wrong with this project, the puffery-filled application, the faulty traffic study, the lack of road maintenance funds, the lack of adequate school and medical facilities, flood potential, Native American relics, stress on the fire and sheriff's departments, and most of all, the small lot sizes. I know that you see only the money potential for the city. However, I see a different future. If I were... If I were living between Lomorata and Bolero on the north side, along that thirty-foot boundary there, that thirty-foot buffer, I would see a narrow buffer behind my home filled with mud, weeds, and rocks. A tree has been planted exactly centered behind my backyard, blocking the sun from my garden in the daytime and my view of the stars at night. The base of the tree has acquired a collection of cans, bottles, cigarette butts, and empty food wrappers. There's also a flattened cardboard box and a plastic bag full of garbage. Late at night, the sound of breaking glass wakes me. An empty liquor bottle was thrown against my fence and shattered. I peek out, several people are gathered around an impromptu bonfire. Suddenly, one of them pulls a burning stick out of the fire and tosses it onto my roof. The next week, when the newspaper is published, a city official is quoted as saying, "It's really sad." She was a good person and gaped back to Carson City. I believe that this is, this homeowners association thing is, um, is not gonna work out. They are not gonna be able to take care, and they're not gonna be able to protect us. And our police and our sheriff's department is stressed enough as it is. I also was the one who got in touch with the Water Conservancy District about the water study currently underway that is supposed to be finished by the end of 2020. I don't think that's a long period of time to wait to see and make sure that anything done with the water and the flows on that land are consistent with the Water Conservancy District's study that we're paying by a hundred-and-fifty, a hundred-and-forty-eight-thousand dollars for. Um, and I just wanna say, I am a civil engineer by education, and I do understand the issues. I don't see where we are, where we are bound to guarantee a developer that they are able to build a certain number of homes on a piece of property. It's disingenuous of them to say that they didn't know that that trail was going to be required or that southern boundary of that property was on a floodplain. They knew all of that. Whatever number of homes they could build with using the standard zonings of SF-12 and SF-6 should be the amount of homes they could build. We, we should not be in the business of guaranteeing them a fortune. Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Maxine, you made the comment that we're doing this because of the money for the city. What's the basis for that statement?
Oh, yeah.
Where, where is it, for this board? Where is it, what, what leads you to believe that this board is doing anything up here for the money?
Not for yourselves personally, but money for the city, for the taxes that you would get from those properties.
It's so, it's your, it's your opinion that we're putting development in just to get property tax?
Yes, even though I know that, if the long-term residential development does not pay for itself and is, is a burden on the entire community.
And you're aware that property taxes used to be the primary source, the revenue source for the city, but it's now sales tax? I mean, there's a cap on, there's a cap on real property taxes. So during the recession, that flipped. It used to be the property tax was one of the primary revenue sources for the city to provide services. That flipped to the sales tax now.
Well, tax is tax. If, if you only build a hundred homes in there of the appropriate sizes to fit the zoning, you're, you're only gonna have a hundred, two-hundred people shopping in the stores as opposed to building two-hundred homes in there when you have four-hundred people shopping in the stores.
All right, I got you. Somebody answer the question on the two-hundred-and-fifty-square-foot open space?
Once again, for the record, Mike Rada with Christie Corporation. Our open space calculations do not factor in any private yard areas. So we provide seven-point-nine-six acres of common open space outside of individual lots. So I'm not sure if the code, I like, um, hope clarify with the code requirements, but we did not include any private yard areas in our open space calculation.
Correct.
I believe, uh, what Mike said is correct, what Maxine said is correct. What the code allows is in the code, if you have a single-family development, when you're doing your open space calculation, you can use the backyard space, and I'm going on memory that provided there's no dimension less than fifteen feet, it's my recollection, toward the open space. What you have before you, and it's up on the screen, that is the seven acres, and none of that is including backyard space. But they could add to this. Um, having said that, in case anybody's worried, oh, great, now they're gonna take away this open space and it's gonna go in the backyard. The final, should this be approved by the, by the board, this is what's before you. And then this gets built through construction drawings, and the final map comes back to the board. The final map has to be per your approval and consistent with what was presented to you with any conditions of approval you've identified. Right now, was before you is seven, a little more than seven acres of open space, none of which is backyards of homes.
Question go.
Mike, while you're up here, I'm going back to the comments made by Mark Johnson for the school district and the number of estimated students that would be generated from the, the number of lots. And can you tell us what you would approximate the time to break ground if this, uh, project is approved tonight? And the estimated build-out timeframe for the entire project? Because the numbers that were generated by the school district, the estimate, those aren't all gonna come on day one when this project is approved. It's gonna be from day one through the time of build-out. So I'm trying to get an idea of what timeframe that estimate would be spaced over.
I'm gonna let Scott address that.
For the record, Scott Christie, Christie Corporation. Um, the schedule we have right now is about a three-year build-out. Uh, based on approvals of getting to a point where we can start construction, we're probably in the range of a year out from that. So I would say build-out is about four years, um, from today, we could say.
Thank you both. Good evening.
Uh, my name's Alicia Timoff. I live off of Long and Mountain Street. Um, I recently purchased my home in twenties, in the beginning of the summer of 2018. So I'm a very new resident to Carson City. And when we looked at homes, we looked at South Reno and into Carson, and we decided that Carson and the west side was the fit that we wanted to go into, because we did wanna try to raise our children here one day. Um, and could see doing that within it. When we bought the house, um, my house is located kitty-corner to Lot Six, just above Pat Anderson's, um, property, which is up in that top right corner. Um, so we looked out in our backyard and saw this gorgeous field, but yet we also understood that eventually, one day, it will get built on. It is surrounded by other homes. Best hope we could hope for is a subdivision similar to what's around us. And with that, um, we were aware of the vintage property. I did look into what exactly that was. I didn't have a whole bunch of qualms with it, but I understand why people did. Um, once this proposal came up and started going through the process, I looked at it and, yeah, are those lot sizes smaller? Yes, but at the same time, that is what this board has already approved to be in that area. And unfortunately, this will not be liked by most of this room, but if we really wanted to change that as a community, we should have done that since the time that the vintage project died and before this project was submitted to you guys. Unfortunately, we didn't do that, and they are now here. Um, I think it is a good plan. The homes are gonna raise my home value, which I am very up for. Um, they're gonna, is it gonna impact the schools? Yes, but I also understand that the community drives what the schools and what kind of infrastructure will come in to follow. I do hope and believe that the school situation will be addressed by the time I choose to have children. Um, so those are all things that I believe this community can take care of with this development. Uh, the developers did have two hearing, or two meetings with the community. I attended both of them. Um, I believe the developers truly do wanna put something in that is going to grow and be a standard that is set of the west side. Um, with that, there were concerns that I brought up to them regarding the height of the homes. I am one of those houses. I don't have anybody currently behind me. Luckily, Pat has a very back, big backyard, so I'll continue to have a little bit more buffer. But again, I didn't want a two-story house kitty-corner for me. They did say, okay, yeah, that makes sense. We can say, yeah, single-story homes. I appreciate those kinds of things. Those are the kinds of things that a developer will take in, to consideration and do. I do believe as far as the green space goes, if we, as a community, really push to try to have grass in there, I do believe the developer will try to fit more of that in. Um, with that, that leads to my biggest concern, and the main reason why I'm here tonight is because of the tumbleweeds and mustard weed going on. Um, I have been in contact with the city since September of 2019, letting them know about the issues and how it has affected us. And just so you guys actually have a visual understanding of what I'm talking about by tumbleweeds. Um, these are photos of my backyard from October nineteenth, roughly. I have a six-foot chain-link fence. It is literally up to my roofline. I could not be in my backyard. Unfortunately, the Andersons are unwilling to assist in any kind of way to prevent this from happening. And the city has come to a point where legally, they feel that they are unable to assist me any further in addressing this issue. Um, that is one very concerning as far as the city goes to me. Um, and also just the real, like, realizing that this is a fire hazard to not only my home, but to the community itself, because these weeds are across the community. And if my house goes up, the houses next to me are gonna go up, possibly.
I can tell you Supervisor Giomi is a former fire chief in Carson City, and, uh, he doesn't let anybody forget about the fire hazard of those tumbleweeds.
I, I really appreciate it, because I...
I walked through her backyard, and those, and that's the reason I brought that tumble mustard up before, because, um, those, we, I'm six-three, they were over my head. They were literally over my head in her backyard.
My, my boyfriend, who's, well, actually fiance now, who's six-two in the back of the room, that's him. We had to clear a spot in our yard so then our dog could go to the bathroom while we were at work. Um, so this development would allow relief from this. So I'm encouraging of that. Um, and to this day, I've had to go to small claims. To this day, we spend one-thousand-eight-hundred-and-one dollars in yard cleanups. I've had to go take civil action to the Andersons in order to try to get some reimbursement. So far, I've gotten eight-hundred-and-eighty-one dollars back. I'm filing in small claims tomorrow, unfortunately, to get the rest, hopefully. Um, it's not an issue that I thought would, I would be walking into when I purchased the home. But I am excited about having my home here and having this kind of development to go in. Um, with that, my biggest concern, and that I would like to see the board add to today's, um, hearing and add as a requirement to the passing of the tentative map tonight, is a maintenance plan for the time between the, and the, uh, Christie Corporation purchasing the land and owning it to the point where they are breaking ground in order to do sewer lines and whatnot. Because I understand there are codes in relation to, once there's dirt shown and sticks going in the ground, so I'm not worried about that phase. I'm worried about that in-between phase. And like I said, current city code isn't helpful right now. So I wanna make sure there, there are preventive measures put in place today that would address my tumbleweed issue. Those measures, I would like to be contingent upon two things. One, the sheet grass. I would like to see a thirty-foot mowed fire break around the entire perimeter of the property from mid-June to the end of August, ideally from the point in which the grass turns from green to brown to help mitigate a fire hazard. Um, and the second one would be that by August fifteenth, that the tumbleweeds must be mowed and removed from the property. That way, I don't care if they grow and they're still green, but before they die off and start breaking off and moving across the property, they are removed, and I will no longer have this issue. I would like to see that put in writing today and attached into this, so that way it's very clear what standards are required, because current municipal code, according to the city, is something that they cannot enforce and have not been able to enforce. Thank you.
What happened to you in your backyard is completely unacceptable from all of us. Don't get any of us wrong. I mean, I think we were all driving by there and astounded at what happened. And at the end of the day, I think what we had to do is we told them, "We're gonna come out and mow it as the city, and then we're gonna back bill you," which I don't know if been paid, but we did back bill.
I have been told that that was...
Maybe they didn't mow it correctly when they did it, but the city is the one that went out there. Uh, because we told the Andersons, "We're gonna come mow it, and we're gonna give you a bill for our mowing." Uh, but maybe that didn't solve all the problem, but I think we could work on the maintenance issue, the maintenance plan during development. Not a bad idea.
Yeah, I would like to see something put in place today to address that. And I did, um, let, uh, the Christie Corporation know during both planning, uh, hearings, or during both neighborhood hearings, that this was the issue and what the level of the issue was and the kind of solution I wanted. Um, unfortunately, I wasn't able to attend to the planning commission hearing. Otherwise, I would have offered this up then. I did give, uh, Mike a call earlier today and let him know that I was gonna be addressing this and that those concerns I would like to have in writing. Um, he said that he is completely fine with doing those kinds of abatement. Part two, I just really wanna have it in writing.
You want it as one of the conditions?
I want it as one of the conditions to be approved with the tentative map.
What I'm hearing, I think that...
Mm-hmm.
Is that there? You got it? Okay.
And I, I really do wanna also thank, uh, Stacy for coming out, 'cause literally I called him up, I'm like, "What am I gonna do? Come, come look at my yard." Because at that point, I've already had pushback from the city saying that they couldn't do anything.
Did the Andersons ever come look at your yard?
They have. I've only seen anybody on their property once, and that was on, I can tell you the date. They've had somebody on their yard on, wait, no, September... On October second, um, that was when we first hired some, after Stacy had come out and visited our yard. Um, on October second, I had a crew come out to clean our yard, because realistically, we were advised the best way to get any kind of solution would to also be going through a civil suit, so I needed to have a bill. Um, that day, the Andersons were out there cleaning it after about a week of being told that they needed to clean the corner of that lot. Um, the crew were cleaning out their property. I chit-chat with them a little bit. Pat Anderson actually encouraged them to offer to clean up our yard. Um, they did so. Unfortunately, realistically, I told them, "You're offering me this five minutes before I have a crew coming. You're not helping me for my next visit." And since then, we have filed one small claims against them. Um, they, we sent them, uh... then, we have filed one small claims against them. Um, they, we sent them, uh, two or three different demand letters prior to, uh, filing suit. And they did not reply. We asked for reimbursement within 15 days of sending a letter. They did not reach out to us. There, so we filed in small claims. The attorney for them did not reach out to us until the Friday before the hearing, which was the day before Thanksgiving. And they wanted to settle. We said we would if you come to some kind of agreement with us for either maintenance of your property and/or reimbursement schedule for our cleanup. And they wouldn't sign anything like that.
Okay, I got you. I think we got you. But again, what's, what happened to you was completely unacceptable. And the other neighbors around there, even across the street, on Mountain Street, it was brutal.
I encourage all of them to have somebody clean up the yard and sell, send the bill to the Andersons and go through lawsuit, because they will pay.
Yeah. I got you. Okay. Anything further?
Nope, that is it.
Welcome to Carson City.
Thank you.
Glad to have you here. Sorry about the tumbleweeds, but-
Me too.
Glad to hear. Tumble mustard?
Tumble mustard.
Tumble mustard. All right, further public comment? Anybody? Anybody? Come on up. Good evening.
Hi. My name is Patty Clark.
Hi, Patty.
I did not expect to speak tonight, so I am not prepared. Um, I've heard a tremendous amount of emotional outpouring from people who don't want their view changed, who don't want open space, who do want open space, who don't know what they really want. They just don't want a project there. I'd like to speak for just a moment in behalf of the people who actually own the property. They have owned the property since the late 1800s. It has been in their family. They have been extremely good caretakers of the land until recently. They are beset with ill health. I think most of you know that. They live in Portland, Oregon, where they are not close to the property and don't see the day-to-day issues that arise. When confronted with those issues, they do take care of them. They do pay for them, and they have done so, right up until now. My concerns are, number one, that property is going to be developed. It is going to be developed. The tentative map procedure for a subdivision results in a grid, no open space, none of the things people claim to need. The walking trails are essential. Oh, no, no, we don't need the walking trails. Buffers are tremendously important. No, no, I don't want a buffer behind my house. There could be someone back there smoking snipperets at night. So there is no way to please everyone. The only way to decide is to go by the ordinances that have been enacted by the city government over years and which potential developers rely upon when they make application to the city and spend hundreds of thousands of dollars devising plans that work in accordance with those ordinances. Then they come in here and they are requested, oh, make the lots bigger, make the lots smaller, make the streets wider, make them more narrow. It goes on and on. There is absolutely no way to please all of the individual neighbors. It won't happen. If you go to any of the seminars for, uh, urban improvement, urban residential development, you're going to see that lots must get smaller. They are actually advocating you stack people in multi-story buildings rather than using individual lots. That is going to become the template for this country. So I'm a Realtor, as you all know. And as a Realtor, I can assure you that smaller lots are the gold standard for the aging population and especially the aging population that is coming into this area from the high-tax coastal states. They want smaller lots that don't require the entire weekend to maintain. They're not going to be a huge impact on the schools, because these are going to be, for the most part, I believe, older families. I, I'm sorry I am so impassioned about this, but I have been sitting through these hearings for five years. I have heard people denigrate, castigate, and embarrass the Anderson family until I can no longer hold my peace. They are good, kind people who have paid their way in this community for well over a century. And now, when this property changes hands and the deferred ad taxes are paying, they're gonna cut a check for $350,000 to the city for deferred ad taxes that people have been complaining they don't have to pay much in taxes because they're deferred. Well, they're deferred, but they come due upon sale. I am, I can go on and on. I just, I'm sorry. I, I apologize to all of you for my vehemence.
There's no reason to apologize. We're here listening. You raise some great points, so. And I know, you know, I grew up here. I know the Andersons have been around here a lot longer than I have. Matter of fact, I was talking to the Winters Ranch folks as to how they got along with the Andersons, and they always, the Winters and I, Anderson, all got along running cattle. I got, I got you. So I understand. And, you know, I'm sorry that they had health problems. Uh, on the other side of that, Patty, you know, it's, it's difficult to say that health problems are responsible for eight feet of weeds in somebody's backyard. Mustard grass or whatever you call it, tumble.
Well, thank you. And all I can say is, it's a conforming, completely conforming project, and I urge you to approve it so we don't have to go through this again. Thank you.
Thank you. Other public comment? Second time, Maxine?
Yes, I'd like to rebuttal.
Maxine Neets. Did I get that right this time? Okay. Um, I'd like it to be brought into the record that, um, Ms. Clark, who's just spoke, is going to be reaping a profit if this project gets passed.
Okay, let's, let's not go down that road, okay? If we can-
And that's where she's coming from.
Well, I, I, I get that. And she's always disclosed she's a Realtor, but I don't want to take on personal issues there. I mean, she's got her own opinion, just like everybody else here does, Maxine.
Well, the Andersons might own, Andersons might own property, and they might be very good people. But I own property also, and I am good people. And you know I have given back to this community.
You are, and you have.
And I want to know why their property right is way above my property right.
I didn't hear that. But again, I didn't hear anybody say that. But what I have, what I have said, what I would ask is that we avoid personal attacks. That's kind of what I tried to say when we were, you know, at the opening of, uh, the public comment, to speak courteous to other speakers. Not everybody agrees. I got you.
Well, I had requested from the district attorney's office to make sure that there were no conflicts of interest, um, and that, uh, people who needed to recuse themselves recuse themselves. Thank you.
Okay. Other public comment? Anybody? All right. Going once? Going twice? Okay, we're gonna close public comment. We're gonna bring it to the board. Um, I should say this. Uh, applicant, you want to say anything in response to some of these? Maintenance plan?
Scott Christie, Christie Corp. Um, maybe I would field some questions.
Okay, if you don't have any, I got it. I think we've got a pretty thorough record of where we are, so. Uh, but there's some questions. Stacy, then John.
I just have a quick question before I get to, um, any suggestions of conditions. What is the remedy? We, we heard quite a bit about the HOA. So, Hope, what is the remedy? If the HOA fails, um, what is the remedy? Um, so that people can be assured that, uh, that they just can't decide to stop paying their dues and walk away and-
Understood. Um, actually, this came up back when the board was looking at Vintage, and I believe it was Vintage. And there was concern that there were a lot of responsibilities assigned to the HOA, in the very fear we heard today, the board contemplated a couple years ago, what to do should the HOA either cease to exist, although lawfully exists, it ceases to function, or if it stops existing, if you will. And so the language has been added to the conditions that assign responsibility to the HOA that says a recorded covenant or deed restriction shall be placed on all properties within the proposed development to ensure maintenance. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm reading the wrong one. Essentially, I was reading the right one, sorry. Essentially, it's a deed restriction will be placed on these properties that will essentially say the properties are subject to an LMD or a landscape maintenance district, and that the, um, folks in the landscape maintenance district will be responsible for 100% of the cost of those assigned improvements. So the city will have the ability to create a landscape maintenance district, and with the deed restriction, we will assign 100% of that cost as opposed to a public subsidized improvement, should the HOA cease to function and, and take on those responsibilities.
And then those funds are collected via taxes. So it's not a, it's not something that can be not collected, because eventually, we would lean their homes and take their property.
Correct. That, that fee would appear on the tax bill, and it would go in a certain bucket for that improvement.
Okay. And one other thing that I heard that I also had a concern about, and I just, um, I want to make sure, Steve, about the, the grading and the change. And I know we probably can't answer it outright now, because the water and the drainage study is probably not completed. But I just want to make sure, we recently had a subdivision that we approved off the end of Airport Road. And there were some really strong concerns of this board about flooding. Um, I, I share those concerns on this property because of responses that I've had to the other side of that field, um, on a couple of hundred-year floods that we've had that I was a responder to. So I want to make sure to, number one, that you're comfortable with the language, that it ensures that, uh, the grading isn't going to change. You talked about upstream and downstream. I'm a bit concerned about side stream, um, because it can, I mean, if they were to design the property in such a way that water didn't block the upstream flow or the downstream flow, but instead went sideways, does that make sense? Um, so I guess I want to make sure that, um, you believe the language in here is sufficient, number one, and number two, to give you guidance from my perspective to be very critical about, um, what comes through when you're analyzing that and approving it.
Steven Potegian, for the record. Um, yeah, so for that second question, I do feel confident that based on what they've submitted, um, and the, the whole approval process, that they're not going to be just moving floodwater over to the side. They have to convey it, um, all the way through the project. And then as far as the grading, um, the existing , uh, street connections, obviously, they have to tie in at that existing elevation. And then those streets are about 1% to 2% to drain, which is pretty flat. It's like about as flat as a sidewalk. Um, and then the lots are graded up from that to get them to drain. So at the backs of the lots, they're about two to three feet higher than the street. So.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate it.
Supervisor Barrett?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, to the developer, um, I'm just curious, if you could tell me, um, I know you're three years out, four years out, you say, what affordable, um, housing this is going to be or not?
Scott Christie, Christie Corp. Um, so pricing, I've had a lot of questions about pricing. It's gonna be market-driven. Um, I don't know if this is the right venue to get into pricing of the homes.
Well, unless you want to, don't, I want to answer my question. I'd-
No, I'm happy to answer your question. I just, I, I can't commit to what the price point is going to be of these homes, but it's going to be commensurate with the area.
Thank you. And in terms of the, uh, landscape district, uh, landscape district or HOA, whatever we're gonna call that, that does not include roads, correct?
Um, what is before you assumes the roads will be public and no road maintenance has been assigned to any HOA or private entity?
That's what I thought. In initial, you said $500,000 for 10 years. What is our cost for roads to get out 20 years, et cetera? Do you, do you have any guesstimate on that?
I apologize. Can you ask that question again?
Yes. You gave us a figure of about $500,000 in 10 years of maintenance. What are we looking for long haul? I mean, I, the deterioration of our old roads is not getting taken care of. So we're adding roads in this project, 20 years down the road.
Thank you, Supervisor. So for the first 10 years, we estimate approximately $500,000. Um, I did want to note that that assumption includes, uh, the assumption that, that these are all priority three roads, so they would not receive any snow plowing, which would be on top of that. Uh, after 10 years, the roads started to deteriorate a little further, so the costs for crack filling go up. Uh, around 15 or 20 years, you'd probably do like a two-inch melon overlay, which we assume would cost about $1 million.
Thank you.
Um, we didn't talk about it yet, but just as a question, I, I think I asked you once before, but on condition number nine, um, it deals with the hours of construction. And I really feel strongly that neighborhoods should not be exposed on the weekend to 7:00 a.m. And I know no one here asked for this change, but I would like us to consider it and force it to the 9:00 a.m. I just don't think it's right to have construction at 7:00 a.m. in a neighborhood. So I would like us to consider, um, that they're fine the Monday through Friday, because that's, people are going to work anyway. But if we could please change it on the Saturday and Sunday to 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m.
That's acceptable to us.
Okay, I would like that. And then, do we have any thoughts, um, similar to what's in item 16 for a maintenance plan that dealt with fire access debris, litter remover, noxious weed control? Can we strengthen that, please, to take care of the tumble mustard? Or do you have a whole nother? But I'm just saying, that's all in 16. Can we expand it to cover this during construction, ownership? Do you have an idea?
Yes, and I actually, I have to say, Alicia came up with the base language. I played with it, and the applicants agreed to it. So it's yours now. And I'm going to suggest we not put in 16. I thought about 16, but I think a standalone's a better, better. Number 49, um, within 30 days of property acquisition, the entire property must be mowed to remove all tumbleweed, tumble, and tumble mustard weed, so as to avoid weeds from breaking off and migrating off the property. This condition shall be maintained. Also, a 30-foot mowed fire break must be maintained from mid-June through September in the unimproved areas.
If I can ask, is weeds really the only problem that needs maintenance there? Is that it?
Using Alicia's base language, that's, that's why I specified the tumbleweed and the tumble mustard.
And I, I walked the field. Um, maybe I shouldn't have admitted that. Anyway, I walked the field as well. And, um, it, it's, from lack of irrigation, it is full of mustard weed, tumble mustard.
That's the issue. I just want to make sure there, we don't need to just say noxious weeds or, I don't know. I just, okay, if you guys are comfortable with that. And then I do want to take them up on, uh, number 47, the condition. Um, instead of it saying along the northern perimeter, homes adjacent to the single story, so we would change it to along the northern perimeter, homes will be limited to single story. So we would change number 47. I just want to make sure we're taking you up on every offer to make it better for the neighbors. And then just in general discussion, I'm, I'm really torn on, on which answer, because I got as many emails talking to me about buffers, and I got many emails talking to me about not having buffers. And so it's, and I want to say how much empathy I actually have for everyone, right? And so you're trying to find the line that's right for the neighbors. have for everyone, right? And so you're trying to find the line that's right for the neighbors and that's right for the development, right for the city as a whole. And so when I look at this, the first thing that comes to my mind, and I'm going to say this because I sit on the Parks and Rec Commission, it's been in the master plan for a very long time. This has been a connection and something we're looking for. And we're continually here buying properties, doing open spaces, putting in linear paths. I mean, it's a huge quality of life issue to have these paths and these connections. And so I'm really, again, I'm torn because people here are telling me they don't want it. And yet, that's our whole master plan and it's a whole function of our city. I mean, we pride ourselves on open space and paths. And so it, I know that I heard Pepsi say, well, it doesn't meet 1710, but it does because it meets our master plan for paths and for connections and bikes and pedestrians and everything else that we want to do. And so I don't want anyone in the public or anyone that lives there to not think we're not listening to you because we are. And it's, I just feel completely torn on, oh, should we be using only Title 18 and make them do a standard tentative map? Is that better than the whole planning we've done all these years where we identified this project for a trail? And so for me to vote against this and tell them they have to do 18, I feel like we'd have to go back to the Park Master Plan that the public had input on and helped us develop and change that. So I just put that out as part of the discussion and the issue to address.
One, one additional question to, to the applicant. There's, there's concern about raising the level of the ground in order to facilitate this development. What's the answer to that?
Scott Christie, Christie Corp. So there's going to be cut and fill on the land. Right now, our grading plan shows a balance of cut and fill. So there's going to be some lots that are going to be lower than existing grade, and there's going to be some that are higher. I would say order of magnitude. Again, I don't want to go on record giving you a number, but we're talking a couple of feet up or, up or down on the lots.
And those would be on the perimeter lots?
Not necessarily. The, the, yeah, I guess if, if I looked at the grading plan, I could give you some actual grades and let you know. My recollection of the grading plan is on that northern boundary, the actual pad elevation of the house that the house would be sitting on is, is slightly lower than the existing grade, but very close to the existing grade.
That's what I want to know.
While they're looking that up. At one point, did I, are we putting, is there a path or just green space on the north side? I made some notes when people were talking and I, I missed that.
There's a path included.
There is a path.
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, I understand. The path is on the north side in the, in what you're depicting is green on this, on this representation.
That's correct.
Okay.
Go ahead.
So looking at the northern boundary on the grades that we have on the grading plan, they're just picking out a few lots along that northern boundary. We are 1.7 feet above existing grade on, on one lot. We'll work our way up the street, 3840, we're 1.2 feet higher than existing grade. Bear with me one sec. And it looks like on the northwestern portion, we're slightly below existing grade.
Okay.
And those can vary a little bit once we get to final design, but I don't, I don't foresee, we're talking tenths, not feet of variance.
All right. Thank you. All right. All right. Any other questions? Is it time to invoke Solomon? All right. Somebody want to start to, we could start the discussion by a motion if we want to try a motion or we can just discuss. All right.
I move to approve the tentative subdivision map based on the ability to make the required findings in the affirmative and subject to the conditions of approval recommended by the Planning Commission with the following staff modifications. And Hope, I'll defer to you to read into the record the changes in the conditions.
Conditions 30 and 37 will add the language, a recorded covenant or deed restriction shall be placed on all properties within the proposed development to ensure maintenance of these amenities is funded in perpetuity. 37 will add the word in perpetuity after HOA. Number 35 will spell out Parks, Rec, and open space, not prose. Also, what has been discussed, and I have this wording on a different piece of paper. There it is. Number 47 will be revised to read along the northern perimeter. Homes will be limited, will be limited to a single story in addition of number 49, which will say within 30 days of property acquisition, the entire property must be mowed to remove all tumbleweed and tumble mustard weed so as to avoid weeds from breaking off and migrating off the property. This condition shall be maintained. Also, a 30-foot mowed fire break must be maintained from mid-June through September in all unimproved areas. And then a potential change to condition number nine that refers to construction hours, limiting construction hours on Saturday and Sundays to 9:00 AM to 5:00 PM.
And in addition to that, staff's modification to condition 39 is stated in the Planning Manager's Memo of January 3, 2020. So moved.
Okay. There's a motion and a second on the, on the floor. Supervisor Barrett first. Like to go on. Hope.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've listened to this carefully, read about this a great deal. And probably three and a half years ago, four years ago, my predecessor was sitting in his seat and the vintage was before this body. Not everybody was here. Stacy wasn't here. I wasn't here. And my predecessor called me out. The room was not only full, but that out there was full. But I was not here because the maiden went so long. I went and picked up my dog. My predecessor wanted me to declare, because I was running against him, how I would vote on the vintage. Well, I'll tell him now. I would have voted for the vintage. I would have voted for the vintage because they were interior roads that would have not been on the city. I would have voted for the vintage because there wouldn't be children going to the schools, probably. I will say that you changed it to the extent that some might have been able to get in there, but it wouldn't have been many. And perhaps not many will be in this development. But there will be some. The school district estimates 60. But I have for four years, including the time I was running for the seat, said that roads are a primary issue to me, and I have talked till I was blue in the face. I don't have any objection to what my colleagues have done, but my voice has not been heard, probably in the community. I remember Lori's predecessor, John McKenna, saying that we may have to go to gravel roads in this town. If we're not going to pay for the maintenance of our roads, I don't see how we can take more residential streets. I also don't like the fact that the schools will be hurt. So I can't do anything about that. It won't be that hurt with 60 people. They'll manage. Somebody's made that point. But because of the votes and because of my strong feelings on this being the state capital, because we haven't touched our residential streets except to do slurry seal occasionally, I'm going to vote against this, not because the developer has done anything wrong. I also agree to an extent with the people who have said that people rely on the master plan. Unfortunately, I don't think people read everything into master plan and the zoning in the interface of the two. So many of them probably didn't know that living near that property was going to come back to bite them with the development. They probably knew it would be a development, but they didn't foresee this. Nevertheless, I commend housing that's smaller and on smaller lots in many places. I'm not sure it's exactly what we want in Carson City on the west side, but that's not for me to determine. What, what is for me to do is to figure out how this community is going to deal with its roads for the next 50 years, in my mind. Well, that's a bad sentence. Excuse me. I will be voting against this merely or almost entirely because of the roads.
Okay. Supervisor Budkowski.
I appreciate everybody that's come out tonight in the comments. By my count, we had seven people speak against, five people that spoke for, plus Mark from the school district. The, the issue for me becomes very black and white because we have a rulebook in place. And that rulebook is in place so that when people come to town to build a project, that they know what to expect. There's a process for changing that rulebook. And that does not include in the middle of the stream when we're talking about a project. The rulebook's in place. We need to deal with the rulebook that we have in front of us, and that's why we're here tonight. If somebody feels that that rulebook is not adequate, there's a process that we can change it, and we are embarking on a multi-year project to update the municipal code. And if people want to see a change to 1710 or Title 18, you will have an opportunity to provide input to make those changes upcoming. But tonight's not the time for that. So this project is in compliance with the rulebook that we have in place. The findings are there, and I don't see how we can deny the project. Based on that, we wrote the rulebook. We need to follow the rulebook, and that's what I intend to do.
I too appreciate John's comments. One of the first subdivisions that I approved as a board member when I came on was a very small subdivision with roads that went nowhere except within the subdivision. And I asked at the time if we could not accept dedication of those roads. And I was informed that we, we didn't really have the ability to do that because during the tentative map, we hadn't accepted it. We hadn't advised them of that. And, and frankly, there's no ordinance that says that we can do it. So I, my, my concern with John's potential vote, he hasn't voted yet. My concern with John's potential vote is that I believe we bear a responsibility to put that in black and white, as Brad said, before we just decide to start doing it. I'm in agreement with you that I don't think we should be accepting roads going forward until we find a way to pay for the roads that we've got. But I don't think we should be making that decision on a piecemeal basis. I believe we should have that discourse in a public environment. And in fact, I'm, I'm going to ask that we discuss it in our strategic plan when we meet so that we have public input, so that we have a way to have that discussion, so that it isn't on a one-off because we all, including you, have approved other subdivisions where we have accepted roads. So I find it a bit arbitrary and capricious for us to just make a step off a ledge and say that this is the one we're going to say no to. That's just me. I represent, or I mean, I, I recognize your right to do what you'd like. Backing up to 1710, I have done as much research on 1710 as I think I've done with just about anything except college courses. I went back and looked at the two times this was adopted originally in 2001. I read the minutes of the board. I have the minutes here. I found it again in 2007. I spoke to the planning director who we had here in 2001, as well as our current planning director. This 1710 was adopted in the process of our master plan adoption. So it wasn't just adopted and thrown out there piecemeal. It was brought up, last reviewed in 2007, right at the time our master plan was being developed. I don't believe that any part of it is arbitrary. I believe there are things in here that could be cleaned up, certainly. But I agree with Brad. I find that this is in compliance with 1710, the way it was written and the way it was intended to be used from the research that I did. So I feel as though, again, we're in a position where we should approve this. And I agree with Brad that changes to 1710, and again, this is something that we could talk about during our strategic plan, may need to happen. I think changes to Title 18 have to happen as well. But you can't change course in midstream. I, I think that also is arbitrary, and I don't find that I can support that. Thank you.
I generally tend to agree with what the chief said, you know, and analogize it to something like, you can't put the genie back in the bottle because some of the things we're being asked to do here require either legislative enactments or code changes. And I don't think you can hold someone to say, you know, you come in here, you rely on the codes and the law is written. I don't know how you do anything different than that without being arbitrary. But I do think that there are things, you know, as you said, there are things around the edge that we could do, and I think we've got a ways to, to take care of those tonight. These are never easy decisions. Like I said, I used to play on those fields. I don't really want to see them covered up either. But on the other hand, we have a zoning code, and I think we have to live by that. So. Ready? John?
I just want to say I don't disagree with anything either Stacy or Brad said. They're right. This is the rulebook. You're stuck with it. I just am trying to shoot across the bow. I pretty much have been around politics my entire life. I think I know how others are going to vote. I haven't talked to them about it. I think this will be approved. I think that we should go by the roadmap or the rules. I'm just trying to make a point. We cannot go on accepting roads. I've gone along, you're right, Stacy, with previous projects, but I'm now in my final year. And two things I ran on were master plan, we ought to be doing it after 12 years. Now it's 14. And roads, those were two of my major issues. And I'm not getting anywhere, which is okay. Minority reports don't bother me, but I'm going to make that report. We need to address our road problems. The federal government won't do it. The state government won't let us do it. We're going to have to do it sooner or later. That's all I'm saying here. And maybe I will vote yes because I believe in rulebooks. And Stacy, your points are well taken, and yours are too, Brad. But we have to have a wake-up call here about our roads.
All right. Comment?
I was just going to comment that I think we're fortunate to have the Christie Group as the developer on this project. They're local, so we can reach out and touch them, which often that's not what we get. We get developers from out of town.
We get developers from out of town that promise you the moon and give you nothing. I appreciate you addressing the tumbleweeds and giving up the two stories on the northern perimeter. The code book allowed you to have two-story homes. So I think while I know some of the residents aren't happy, I just want you to know you have a good developer that did offer things that they did not have to give and we up here would have still had to approve this project pursuant to the rulebook. And so I want to thank you for trying as hard as you could and I'm sorry we couldn't make everyone happy because it's just impossible to accomplish that. But thank you for trying to meet the residents every step that you could do that and to give up construction time, to fix the tumbleweeds, to go to one story, to change it from Mediterranean because they didn't want that, you know? And I think that they're going to enjoy the buffers and, again, working towards our master plan. So I just want to thank you for sticking it out.
Further discussion on the board? Are you ready for a vote? Okay. On the motion, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Oppose nay?
Nay.
Motion passes four to one. I don't see the electronic stuff up yet. Sit up.
We fixed it. Should be working.
There it is. Okay. All right. We're now on concluding public comment. Another shot if anybody wants to take it. Any public comment? Concluding public comment? Anybody?
Yeah.
Jason, come on up.
Jason Kitcheniki for the record. I'm excited to learn, that was something that I learned, that this is going to be taken on by the board, something that, I'm glad I stuck it out through this whole entire meeting because that is something I think is sorely needed. So I command you, I'm moving forward with updating the master plan, I think you said, and taking a look at the code 1710. Thanks.
Thank you, Jason. All right. Public comment, listen, hang on. Come on up, Maxine.
As I said, I, when I moved here, I thought Carson City was going to be my forever home. You guys have just broken my heart.
I just want to say thank you for all this listening, understanding, trying to understand. I am disappointed that we can't, within 1710, have a little bit more flexibility to ask for reasonable things like lots that fit our neighborhoods. I would like to be a part, I would want to be into the updating of the 17 and the 18 because I think that when it's stated and maps are drawn out on the master plan and it's clear, I mean, it's so clear that 84% of this land was supposed to be 12,000 square foot lots. And then this is what is allowed under our codes. It's injustice to present it that way and then not have it come out that way. So it's disheartening, but thank you.
I got you. Mr. French?
Thank you. I've been up since four and this, this has been an amazing time to have such an opportunity for education and be so tired. I'm sorry. The main thing is, I ditto both, highly disappointed that our readings were different so that we had this clash. I'm glad that what has been suggested in the groups that have spoken have brought up the possibility of reviewing master plan and perhaps code changes and that we will all not only be here for this, but then to help support you in those things that are needed to make those changes because I certainly see those are necessary with what has been spoken about tonight. So I want to be part of that as well and I'm sure you're all going, oh, gosh.
No, we don't.
But the main thing is I, this has been very tough. I appreciate all the, the heart and soul and effort that people put in tonight to help educate me on both ends of the realm of this as far as spectrum. Thank you. And I appreciate Mr. Barrett, I'm sorry, Supervisor Barrett. My position's similar, so ditto on a lot that you had suggested today and good luck with the tumbleweed. I've also dealt with those. Thank you very much.
Tumblemustard.
Oh, excuse me. Tumblemustard. Thank you.
Other public comment?
Thanks for really dealing with the tumbleweeds or mustard. There was a couple tumbleweeds in there too. They were pokey, but thank you. I really do appreciate that.
Further public comment? Concluding public comment? Anybody? All right then, unless we're hearing no further public comment, are we ready to adjourn?
I do have something to add.
That's fine. That's what it's for. Come on.
My name is Lori Entner and I am a.
Can I get your first name, please?
Lori.
Lori.
Entner. And I am a resident of, and work in Carson City. I work across the state capital and I have with me a petition and I have copies for each of you and the clerk and for the public. And we are requesting a review and approval of the existing Wells Fargo kiosk that's on Second and Carson. It's in the downtown redeveloped corridor and we feel that the design of the kiosk is not compatible with the redevelopment of downtown and the historical structures that are there. We realize it's a multi-use area, but, and we don't, we're not asking for it to be removed. We want a facade of this and future addition to be consistent with the redevelopment and the historical look of downtown Carson. And I will continue to gather signatures and I'll be at other planning meetings until we can at least change the way it looks. It's a bright yellow and red neon grossness.
You know, city manager, can we do something about this?
I know it's, that's lighter than what you're dealing with.
Yeah, we have a lease, but I'm not, I'm not sure what we can do with that, but we'll look into it.
Flies back the lease a little bit.
And in my packet, I have like suggestions, there's different Wells Fargo kiosks and different ATM kiosks all over the United States that work with the area. In Virginia City, you have one that looks like a storefront. In the Denver airport, I was just there and it has a nice facade of trees. So we can make it look better. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Very good. Glad you waited. How long did you wait?
All day.
All day?
No, just tonight.
All right. Thank you. Any other public comment? Anybody? Okay. Hearing none, then unless there's an objection from the board, we're going to be adjourned until the next regular meeting.